One minute. I'll call the order, our city council meeting for November nineteenth. And welcome everyone that's here tonight. First item of business is the pledge of allegiance which will be led by Melissa Worthing. So she'll come to the microphone, please.
Will everybody please rise? Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
I know the next item of business on the agenda is the citizen comments, but I'm gonna take privilege and move that to after the presentation. So we'll, we'll do the badge pinning, the new firefighters, and newly promoted firefighters. Derek, Chief Maxfield.
Jamie asked if I would turn this because it helps the recording, so I'm gonna stand, kinda talking sideways, but, um, thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us an opportunity to recognize some of the fantastic employees in the fire department. We have a number of new hires and promotions that we'd like to do the badge pinning for tonight, but before we do that, um, if I could ask Battalion Chief Brian Crump to come on up. We wanted to recognize, I'm not gonna turn it this way, we wanted to recognize Brian. He completed his executive fire officer certification through the National Fire Academy. It's a very rigorous, um, program. It's a four-year program that requires him to go back to the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland, uh, once a year for two weeks over a four-year period, um, and also do some applied research projects and some significant papers. Um, often it's been kinda referred to in the fire service as the master's degree of the fire service, so he just graduated from that not too long ago, and we wanted to present that and, and recognize him, so. And then if I could just ask the firefighters and, and those who are being pinned, if they will come up as I read their names, we'll just kinda do it like the police have done and form a little-
We're, we're gonna invite the council members to come down right now.
Perfect, that would be great. And then I'll just, um, read each of their names and what their badge pinning is about tonight, and if, as I read their names, if they'll come up, but, um, Thomas Anderson is a firefighter who has completed his probation and will be, uh, receiving his badge. Sean Butts, uh, promotion to paramedic. Alex Harris, promotion to engineer. Eric Larson, paramedic. Sean Lowe, paramedic. Toby McPhee, firefighter. Curtis Madsen, firefighter. Donovan Minetz, firefighter. Tyson Moser, paramedic. Dan Nilson, engineer. Some of you can go on this side, too, if you want. Ryan Ottley, paramedic. Clint Paxton, battalion chief. And Nate Reisch, captain. Austin Shelley, paramedic. Cody Snyder, firefighter. Colin Steele, engineer. And Brandon Van Monfrans, firefighter. Just to give you a little bit of background, obviously, this has spanned quite a time period. Um, some of these firefighters just completed their probationary year, and so that's why they're receiving their badges at this time. And then a lot of the promotions as well have just taken place within the last six months or so, and, and we wanted to recognize them all at one time. Um, so with that, I think they've all brought up who's gonna pin their badges, and with that, we'll go ahead, and everybody can just pin your badges at the same time, and then we'd like to get a group picture right up here when we're done, so. Shaking. So we'll probably just make a big circle like that, starting with you, Sean. And I know by looking out here, it looks like we probably don't have any firefighters out in the city right now. We do. We're, we're still covered. If you wanna go ahead, Sean. So stay, yeah, just kinda hang tight here and then we'll do a big- Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna point out- Okay, we're gonna do the picture back and forth.
Great, one, two, three. You guys can talk, without me, you can talk.
We've got refreshments in the room across the way, if everybody wants to head that direction.
We'll give them just a moment to evacuate the council chambers. Okay, we'll now move to the citizen comments, and remind those that are speaking, wish to speak, that they'll have three minutes to address city council on item, items that are on the agenda tonight, or if they have another issue they would like to speak to us about, welcome to do that. And a reminder that there will be four public hearings, and so if you want to address council regarding one of those items, you can do it that time. We will begin with, uh, those that have signed up, and I have a Scott Bell. So Scott, please come to the microphone.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, you know how to clear out a room. My name is Scott Bell. I live at ninety-one seventy-eight South Eden Brookway. My telephone number is eight oh one five seven three eight one nine five. Mr. Mayor, are you aware of the details of the, uh, two thousand nineteen HB four eleven, which is the Community Renewable Energy Program?
Just to let you know, we typically don't respond to questions, um, council.
Okay, and that's fair enough. What I'd like to do is talk to you a little bit about that program today. Um, HB four eleven was passed in two thousand and nineteen. It enjoyed by, a broad bipartisan support. It passed by about a two-thirds majority in the House and a three-quarters majority in the Senate. It was signed into law by Governor Herbert in March, and it became effective in May of this year. The HB four eleven, the Community Renewable Energy Program, allows for municipalities like West Jordan to require qualifying utilities like Rocky Mountain Power to provide up to one hundred percent of the electrical needs of the city and its customers, um, uh, from renewable energy sources by the year twenty thirty, okay? To date, about, at least five municipalities have elected to participate. They are Salt Lake City, Cottonwood Heights, Park City, Summit County, and Moab, and there may be others as well that I'm not aware of, but a number of, of municipalities have opted in already. Basically, it, it's a, it's a very low-risk or no-risk program for the city of West Jordan because the law provides for the, uh, utilities' customers, whether they're commercial or residential, to opt out if they don't want to participate. It is a simple and powerful way that the city can participate in the emerging technology and trends of renewable energy, but more importantly, for the city, which is the fourth-largest, well, West Jordan is the fourth-largest city in the state, to participate in a meaningful way in cleaning up the air quality along the Wasatch Front. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm here tonight to make a request of you. The request, I don't know how exactly that you, uh, set agenda items for council meetings, but my request is that, that you set an, uh, item for the, uh, December fourth meeting to discuss the HB four eleven and debate it, and if, uh, and take public input, if there is any. Um, I further request that you set an agenda item for December eleventh, uh, to, um, to further discuss and debate it and, and have public input, but more importantly, to take a yes or no vote on that, uh, on participation in the program. And the reason, and it's critical that we do this by December eleventh or the last meeting of the, of the, uh, of the year. And the reason for that is because municipalities have to opt in by December thirty-first of this year, otherwise they have no opportunity to participate after that. I would like your commitment this evening that we could get those on the agenda item today, or today for the December fourth and December eleventh meetings, is that, is that possible?
We'll have, uh, our city manager get in touch with you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, if you have any questions about it, like we have, I'm not an expert, I may have to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was all that had signed up. If there is anyone else that would like to address council at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the citizen comments and move to communications. First, from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. At this point, I believe Scott Langford and Brian Clegg are the two, uh, department heads that have comments.
Mayor and council, uh, I happened to, uh, be out at the Amazon construction site earlier today, and, uh, just as a heads up, uh, now is a very good time to go and view, in, in my estimation, a historic, uh, construction site, not only for West Jordan but for our region. Uh, just to put it in perspective, I, I could have taken pictures and, and shown that to you, but if you haven't been out there, it, pictures do not do it justice. The building itself covers thirty-five acres. It, it's approximately, it was basically over seven times the size of a Super Walmart, and so it is, uh, it's got, all of the, the walls on the north, east, and west sides, uh, the south side is open, so if you drive down Old Bingham Highway and look north, you can look into this huge structure. And, uh, anyway, I just wanted to give you a heads up that this is a very, very impressive building.
Thank you. Oh, couple of comments. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this something that it would be possible to arrange for a tour for the council and perhaps planning commission to, to have the opportunity to view? I, I think there's a number that would be interested in that.
Should we bring our roller blades? That would be really cool.
Not at this time, it's a very active construction site, so I wouldn't, probably wouldn't want the liability at that. But once, once the building is further along, I'm sure there's going to be additional opportunity. But now's a very good time to, to view it as an active construction site.
Brian.
Um, thank you, Mayor and council, I just wanted to give you an update, uh, on the playground fencing. Um, we've, we sent it out a third time, we did get, uh, some good quotes back, some good bids back. We will bring proceeding with, uh, black vinyl coated, um, chain link fence, four foot high. Um, that construction will probably start mid-January, there's some back time to get everything built and made, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that that's moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to city council comments, start with council member Anderson.
Thank you. Um, just had a few things as my, my, uh, three things specific, well, I guess four. As my, my time winds down here in this special corner of the dais, um, first thing, it was very energetic for me to see so many people here before the firefighters left because, so, uh, I just wanna thank everybody who's stuck around. Uh, grateful to have you here tonight, but it would be, it would be nice to see residents come out and see us, um, work on behalf of the city to make West Jordan, uh, the best city in the state. Uh, Western United States, west of the Mississippi, whatever you wanna say, but, uh, West Jordan's a pretty great city. I wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving that they get to spend with their families, uh, that's coming up. Also, I've had a number of positive comments about the construction on seventy-eight hundred south, I think a lot of people were concerned about, uh, how that was gonna work with all the cones and barrels, and, uh, now all I hear is, uh, there's two left turn lanes into Jordan Landing, um, and it just seems much more fluid. And then the last thing is just, you know, something I've been talking about my entire tenure on the council, and that's just having communications between, um, staff and the council, between residents and the council, the city to the residents, and I'm, I'm hoping with the new election, uh, and the new form of government that's starting in January, that those of you who will, uh, remain here, uh, will have a, a focus on that communication, whether that's additional people in the communications department, um, how to best get people involved. You'll read in the parks packet later on that we held two open houses, and between the two open houses, we only had fourteen residents attend. I think we're missing something, and I would be remiss to think that, uh, over these past three years, we haven't been able to rectify that and be able to have stronger communication with the residents, the city, and the elected officials of this great city. And so those are my, uh, my comments for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of, uh, parks, open houses, I wanna thank both, uh, Brian Clegg and Justin Stoker, who both, um, were, reached out to me, uh, for the Maple Hills Park Open House that's gonna be coming up here within a few weeks. Um, both of them reached out to me, I don't know if they knew that the other had, but, um, to find out what the neighborhood, when the neighborhood would like to go, so it was very nice to, to have that, that, uh, that communication, as, as council member Anderson just said. And, um, as well, last week or the week before, uh, I was driving down seventy-eight hundred south at about ten-thirty at night, one night, and noticed that, um, there was some construction going on there, some utility work with, uh, it was out by the Smiths, out off fifty-six-hundred west. Some utility work related to that copper rim development, and they dug up some of the road and had, you know, a lane, a lane shift in place, and, um, a car had hit a few of the cones, making it kinda unclear which way to go, so I texted our city manager and asked him if he'd have somebody look at it, and within half an hour, uh, again, Justin Stoker was out there, um, working with the police department and getting, you know, getting that put back the way it should be so that the way to go was clear. So I just wanna thank, um, David Bricky and our public work staff and the police department for their quick responsiveness when, uh, you know, little issues come up in the middle of the night, so thank you.
Councilmember Boylock.
As tonight is the night that we canvass the election results, I want to thank all of those that participated. Um, I feel like voting is not just a right, I feel it's a responsibility, so those of you that were responsible, thank you, and congratulations to those that have won seats. Um, I see a couple of them here, and I'm grateful for that, and hope that the others that will be joining us, um, come so that they can be up to speed when January comes and they have to make votes that maybe we're talking about that information now, so. Thank you for that. I want to thank staff for the time that they put in, and remind everyone that we're better when we follow processes and we work together, we get, we come out with a better result, and part of that process needs to include our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor, I, um, wanted to just say wow. I know the firefighters are all across the hall now, I know they can't hear me, but I've been through a few pinings in the two years I've been on the council, and tonight was incredible. If you ever wonder what your taxes pay for, you should've been in this room tonight, 'cause you can see the, the great man that served our city as firefighters and protect us, and we also have our police officers as well that we don't see on a daily basis, but they're out there protecting us and taking care of us, and I'll, I'll pay taxes any day to make sure those guys are protecting me, 'cause I know they will. I've had a lot of great opportunities to meet with them and to know them over the past two years, and I wish I could have more time to spend more time with them, 'cause I know they do a great job for our city behind the scenes, and we don't see it twenty-four hours a day. The second thing I wanted to bring up was tonight we will be, uh, talking about water rates. Um, to be honest with you, from January through June, I did not hear anything. July and August, I heard a lot. Um, there's this little thing that happens in July and August called heat, and it tends to kill grass. Um, and we, as citizens, not me individually, not just two people, the whole city spend a lot of our water, watering our lawns and taking care of our landscaping, and it hurts when we, when we do that. When we, uh, hired Denise Steck to be our finance director, the first thing I told her, and she'll probably remember this, is, can you fix our water rates? First thing I asked her to do. It's taken some time, there's been a lot of other things that have been important that we need to get done first, but Denise has worked hard, and tonight we're gonna see the fruits of those labors tonight. I wanna thank the others in the council who helped get this together as well. This hasn't been an overnight process. Water rates weren't discussed in one day or two days, it was discussed over a period of time. Decisions were made, and unfortunately, you know, cost-wise during those summer months, it did hurt a lot of people. And so I think tonight, as we talk about that, listen to what we talk about, we want the best for West Jordan, we want the best for our water, but we also know that we have to pay for the costs of infrastructure and also the cost to bring that water into our city, since the water just doesn't appear out of nowhere. I always, uh, I always tell people, like, if you ever, if you're ever excited and wanna see some magic, when you get home, go to your kitchen, turn on your water, it just turns on automatically. But it doesn't get there by magic, there's a lot that goes through that, so I'm, I'm excited to talk about that tonight, I'm excited for the council to discuss that, and to find ways that we can make it better for our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna choose to compliment our police department on the news article that I saw yesterday and today about their success on cleaning up that nasty drug thing that was going through the schools throughout the valley, so thank you for being on top of things and getting that off the streets.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I think anything I would have to say would be, uh, redundant for the most part regarding those who ran in the- the most part regarding those who ran in the race. Thank you. I'll echo the thanks to those who are serving in public safety. The only thing I really have to add is also a thanks to the family behind those who are in public safety. It takes a whole family to, to have that one person here on the front line to protect and to serve the residents, and it's a substantial sacrifice made by the family behind the scenes. Seeing many of the, the family here tonight for the pining was, was impressive and appreciated. They miss out on their family a lot. We're coming up on Thanksgiving, and there are many who will be absent from family meals, Christmas, New Year's, all, all the holidays, all the birthdays, anniversaries, special dates. There's a significant sacrifice by the entire families in order to be able to serve our city, and I would ask that you relay the thanks of the council to the families for their support as they allow their loved ones to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to item six, Public Hearings. Receive public input and consider for approval ordinance nineteen days forty, considering an amendment to Chapter Six, Parks, Recreation, Trails, Open Space Master Plan, as referenced in the West Jordan Comprehensive General Plan. Brian Clegg?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. This is a, this is a big event for the Parks Department. We've been working, mainly Dave, as I was out of the loop there for a little while, for about a year and a half trying to get a good, solid plan put together. Tonight, we have Lisa Benson here that's, that's compiled the plan and worked with us to get it where we, to where we needed it. So I'll turn the time over to her to give her presentation, and then if you guys have questions, you know, feel free to ask at that time if that's appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunities to present the draft plan to you tonight. As Brian said, we've been working on this process for a long time, and we're excited to be at this point. The purpose of this planning document is to build on your other existing documents. This serves as a major update to one of the components of your general plan. This component was last updated in two thousand and twelve. This component updates that with a clearer vision of where you're at today and where you're heading with your parks and recreation in the city, and it also establishes new goals moving forward. The plan is divided into seven different chapters, as you see here, and we'll, we'll walk through each of those sections in a summary format. So, public involvement. I, I want to address Councilman Anderson's comments about the public involvement process, and I do realize that the attendance was definitely low at those public scoping meetings, and I want to say that it's definitely something that we're seeing that's a lot more common today in all of our planning processes. We're getting a lot lower attendance at face-to-face public meetings. People seem to be more willing to participate online or through surveys or other formats. We get a lot better participation rates through those formats. In some cases, we might have some rumor come up that something controversial is on the docket, and that gets us a great turnout at the meetings, you know, even if it's not true. That's typically when we get our, our great attendance at face-to-face meetings. Otherwise, people, you know, seem to be generally supportive and excited about parks, and maybe they don't feel like they need to, you know, get in there and, and provide as much input. But we did have a great process in place. We had a terrific advisory committee that was advising us throughout the process, giving us great feedback. We had a project website available throughout the process and received some comments through that. We also had a statistically valid survey, and that's where we got the bulk of public input on the process, and the nice part is that that is statistically valid, so it's representative of, of the community at large. So we have, we had that to kind of base some of our, our direction on, and we also conducted some focus interviews and in addition to the face-to-face public meetings. So the results of the survey, residents' top priorities tend to be focused on maintaining what you have right now. They're interested in improving the maintenance of your existing parks and trails, and they want to see upgrades to playgrounds and your parks, but they also want to see more open space preserved. So those were the, the three top priorities of residents. The number one reason for residents using a park is its close proximity to their home, and you have about forty-six percent of residents that participate in the county recreation programs. Fifty-two percent of residents use city trails at least a few times a year, and overall, eighty-six percent of residents believe that the city is doing a good job providing parks, recreation, and trails opportunities. So that's, that's a pretty positive outcome from the survey, a good indication. Looking at demographics, you're looking at a fifty-seven and a half percent increase in population by build-out. You're starting at around a hundred and fourteen thousand for your two thousand and eighteen population, and that will be up over a hundred and eighty by build-out in two thousand and sixty. Looking at your city, West Jordan is younger than the state and the nation, but older than the county. You have more children under eighteen than the county, the state, and the nation, but at the same time, you're also gradually aging and your household size is decreasing. So we take a look at all of these overall factors to look at existing park needs and what you need to be planning for in the future. Looking at your parks and recreation system to set a glance, you have over nine hundred acres of existing facilities that serve your community, and that's parks, open space, golf courses, all of those facilities. We do use a, a more refined, smaller number for your level of service, which we'll get into a little bit later in the presentation. This map shows the distribution of existing parks within the city and also your existing open space. I should, it shows the locations. Part of our analysis was also to look at the individual amenities within each of those parks, and with the help of the parks staff, we, we updated all of these numbers and made sure you guys have a good starting point looking forward. You have four different park types in the city, mini, neighborhood, community, and regional. These are the primary lands that we use when we're calculating level of service because these are the lands that the city owns and are within your control. Our advisory committee, however, did advise us to include the seventy-five acres out at the Phase Two of the soccer complex because the city has made such a significant investment in that facility already. So that raises your, that brings your total park acres for level of service up to three hundred and twenty-two point six. We'll get into this in a little more detail. We don't include county or school district lands or golf courses just because they're not under your control.
We have a question for you.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Can you tell me what the difference is between a mini park and a neighborhood park?
It's typically based on the park size, the acreage, and also the amenities that are in that, and we have, we address that in the, later in the plan, and I can, I can go over that and explain that to you.
I think, just a quick example, there's a mini park right here on Twenty-two and Seventy-Eighth on the west side of the road. That's a mini park right in there on that corner.
It's one of Veterans?
No, it's across the street from Veterans. That, that's a mini park.
Yeah, so mini parks are typically, in West Jordan, they're four acres or less, and they usually just have lawn and maybe a bench or a pavilion, pretty minimal facilities, versus a neighborhood park that might have a sports park or a sports court or some sort of facility like that. And the neighborhood parks are four to ten acres typically in West Jordan. Yeah. So, level of service is a ratio that we use to gauge where you're at and where you need to be in the future. It's a, a ratio of your existing park acres to your current population, and in West Jordan, it's, it's a ratio per thousand population. So right now, West Jordan has two point eight five acres of parkland per thousand people. Another analysis that we do is the distribution analysis because it's important not only to look at how much parkland you have, but how that's distributed through the city so that we ensure that everyone is having equal access. And so we assign different service radii to the park types depending upon, you know, walking distance or, or driving distance, and we came up with a few gaps in the existing city park system and, as well as future development areas. So this map shows the distribution areas, looking at your existing park system. All of the yellow is existing or planned residential development, and you can see there are some gaps along the, the east, east and south side of the city, a few smaller pockets in the north, but the bulk of that is out west where you have future development coming in down the road. And so looking at filling those gaps, the plan recommends developing your currently planned parks, and obviously you have a couple of these in process already, working on Ron Woods and Maples Park, also developing the, the West Airport Park and Veterans Memorial Park, some of the land that's left out there. The Wellby Regional Park will also help serve, will help fill that gap when the county develops that park down the road. Sometimes you have to rely on other nearby facilities if you don't have options, you know, within your boundaries to take care of that, but that will be a great resource and accessible to your residents. We're also proposing three new parks on the east side of the city to help fill some of those smaller gaps, and then some of those areas, like I said, you, you have to rely on some non-traditional means where you don't have vacant land available to develop new parks. So we're recommending utilizing three of the trailheads along the Jordan River Parkway to, to help meet that need because that's such a unique amenity that you guys have access to, and it does help meet recreational needs, although it may be a little traditional, less traditional format. So if we look at the distribution analysis of the city with all of the currently planned parks and then those three additional proposed parks and the three trailheads along the Jordan River, you can see that your distribution analysis is much improved in the future, and you should be generally meeting the needs of your residents with access to parks. For the future level of service, as I mentioned, the survey indicated that residents are generally happy with the job that you guys are doing, so the plan recommends moving forward with that current level of service of two point eight five acres per thousand people into the future.
Another question for you. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. Just, I, I, as, as I've been going through this, I've just done some calculations, and it's probably not in this packet because this is more of a, of a master plan, but, you know, for the, the council members elect that are in the audience and staff and Denise, this is going to come to you because it's money. But I, I calculated, one of your graphs showed a hundred and eighty thousand residents when we're, the city is built out, and so I calculated that to be at two point eight five acres per thousand people, which is in this round circle. That a hundred and eighty thousand residents would be five hundred and thirteen acres of parks, which is about a hundred and ninety-one additional acres than what we currently have. And so just as a standpoint, I know we're kind of stressed, Brian and Dave, we're kind of stretched thin on maintaining our existing parks. So if, if this gets adopted, the, the council and the mayor-elect will have a responsibility to figure out how to fund a hundred and ninety-one acres of more parks and more maintenance, water them. So I just, it's more, not really a comment, but just, I, I kind of think different out. And so, you know, that's, and I don't know if that's part of, I don't think the money is part of this plan. This is a vision of where we want the parks to go, but behind the scenes, for the residents and for the mayor-elect and the council, it's, it's a hundred and ninety-one additional acres that we have to mow and water and fix sprinkler heads and put in pipes. So just, if you adopt it, there's a financial component. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, and the, the plan does address costs at a high level, but as you say, it's, it's kind of planning level costs, and one of the things that we recommend is securing the land as soon as you can because land prices just keep increasing. For example, in Taylorsville City years ago, we recommended, you know, the same thing, buy your land now even if you can't afford to develop it or maintain it, and they did that, and then as they've developed and grown, they've been very relieved that they had all of this land in stock and, and it's well, you know, well distributed throughout the city. So I know, you know, that's always the challenge with this, you know, trying to balance needs with desires and, and funding, you know, recommendations. So we definitely appreciate your concerns, and we hope that this plan can just help, help you make those decisions in the future. So looking at, at those park needs out into the future, by two thousand and twenty-eight in ten years, you need a total of three hundred and seventy-six acres, and by the time you take out your existing park acres, you need to develop fifty-three and a half acres. You don't have to acquire any new additional land by two thousand and twenty-eight because you have, you know, a lot of these lands already. So just, just so that, that's clear. You don't need to acquire any by two thousand and twenty-eight, but you will need to develop them fifty-three and a half by two thousand and twenty-eight to continue meeting needs and to stay on track. You will actually, if you develop all of your existing lands that you do own right now, you would end up with a fifty-five point eight surplus in two thousand and twenty-eight, so you might be a little ahead of the game there. Looking out to two thousand and sixty, you need a total of five hundred and thirteen point one acres, and by then, you, you definitely need to acquire sixty-eight acres and develop a total of a hundred and thirty-seven. So this takes into account, again, some of the lands that you already own and what you need to, to acquire on top of that. And looking at park standards, this is where we talk about, you know, what size parks create, what, what size, what types of parks and what, what amenities go in those. So mini parks are typically, again, four acres or less, and they're, they're very simple with basic, basic components. Neighborhood parks are four to ten acres, and they typically include the same components as a mini park, but also have a playground or a sports court or a sports field, some sort of element that, that can serve a larger area and a bigger population, and also often have walking trails. Your community parks are ten to thirty acres, and those typically have all of those same amenities as a neighborhood park, but there's another layer on top of that, which is something like a sports complex or an aquatic center, something that is, is more of a larger community draw that people are generally willing to drive to access. And then your regional parks are thirty acres plus, and they typically have multiple large amenities, so like a swimming pool plus, plus some of these other sports complexes or other facilities. Like I mentioned, we looked at the amenities within each park as well, and one of the ways that we look at it is per population, like how many basketball courts you have per population, and then we, we look at national standards, but then we have to adjust that for each city because each city is unique in, in how you use your recreational facilities and what sort of demands you're seeing. So we worked closely with the committee and staff to fine-tune this level of service for individual amenities, and we, we come up with surplus or deficits based on what you have and what you need. And some additional items to help fine-tune your parks and recreation system in the future, wayfinding and signage master plan, a lighting facility feasibility study, and then also potentially, you know, if you lose the soccer fields, finding a way to replace those, and I know those are, that's not an easy, an easy fix, but some of these items are just, you know, definitely down the road, like a lighting feasibility study that might help you extend the use of some of your fields and, and kind of decrease the demand that you're seeing on some of those areas. Looking at recreation, the county provides most of your recreation programming at the Gene Fulmer Fitness Center, and you also have some of your needs met through private sports clubs. Your most popular programs that came out of the survey are youth soccer, flag football, and baseball. The county also provides your seniors with great services at the, the West Jordan Senior Center, and that's provided through the county agenting and adult services. You guys have a great range of community events that were very popular in, in the survey, and definitely keep up the good work on that. And your arts programs, you have a great variety of performing arts, visual arts, and literary arts as well. So recre, the recommendations for this section are to continue your partnership with Salt Lake County, but also make sure that you're working with them closely to ensure better distribution of the information so that people know what's available. That always kind of comes out in the survey. I, I don't know what's available. I didn't know any of this was available. So, so anything you can do to improve information out there. Also revisiting the feasibility of a west side recreation center down the road. You know, there's obviously been some interest in, in having a, a center out there, and the need, you know, will likely be increasing with the development that is coming, so that's just something to keep on the radar. Continuing with your plans to develop a dedicated arts center, and then just ensuring that, you know, west side residents also have access to some of these great programs you guys have in place. Taking a look at trails, you have a good number of mileage of trail types in place already, your multi-use trails and urban trails, and you have a significant number of bike lanes in place already. The plan definitely expands on that, increasing all of those trail types. This map shows the planned trail map, and the focus on this, this plan was to take advantage of your, your natural corridors that are in, in the city, a lot of those drainages that are out on the west side, and also your northwest canal trails, you know, someday, if that negotiation can be made, it happens in some areas, but the idea is to create a lot of looping options so that people can, you know, start in one area and just take a great loop and have all kinds of options of, of adding different lengths to their, their destination. lengths to their destination. And we also look at some of the detail needed for some of the crossings to make those trails safer. The plan also provides trail standards, so development standards for these trail types. And for example, on this multi-use trail section, I wanted to point out that where you have a paved trail, we're also recommending an adjacent unpaved section to that, just so that people that like to trail run or may not, you know, have an easier, an easy time on paving, that they have an option within a corridor. If you have room, you give them an option to either run on the pavement or run on an unpaved surface. So again, there's sections for urban trails and your unpaved trails. So the plan recommends completing your network by 2060, implementing the proposed crossings, and looking at developing a complete streets policy. And I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with a complete streets, but it's a policy that states that all modes of transit will be, or transportation will be considered and implemented, you know, where feasible when you're doing road updates. So you're providing for pedestrians, bicycles, transit, and automobiles so that everybody can use these corridors. And that's something to look at in the future. Also adding lighting and safety improvements at trailheads and along key trail corridors. And then taking a look down the road at a sidewalk master plan, and I know this is a pretty fine level of detail to get into, definitely recommended down the road, but we had some concern during the public involvement process about just access from neighborhoods, getting to the parks within those neighborhoods, you know, maybe not, you know, missing sidewalks or kind of unsafe conditions. So that was something to take a look at for the future. Other considerations are looking at the urban water trail. The county provided, they produced a Jordan River Trail Master Plan, and it includes a great component for water recreation that you may want to consider in the future, although that's, you know, definitely less of a priority than some of these other items. Also providing a dedicated source of funding for trail improvements, and then establishing a committee, a bicycle and pedestrian committee to help prioritize projects and work on securing grants to assist with funding. Open space, we've got almost 300 acres of open space that serves the city. And open space typically doesn't have a level of service. It's just secured on an opportunistic basis, and we're recommending that, you know, wherever you can, wherever the opportunity arises, definitely take advantage of that and focus on preserving those natural drainages and corridors that you have within your city. A lot of communities don't have that sort of a resource, and you guys have some great amenities within your city already that you can capitalize on. And also consider unique uses where they're appropriate in some of those open spaces, you know, like a bike park or amphitheater or something along those lines. And getting down to the big numbers. So improving, upgrading all of your existing parks and the amenities, filling those gaps, meeting your LOS needs, and, you know, acquiring all of that land and developing that land in the future. This is a really big price tag. We understand that. $69 million. Like we said, definitely if you can secure the land, do that as soon as you possibly can. Looking at trails, for all the trails improvements, it's $21 million, and this includes trails, trailheads, crossings, lighting, the wayfinding and signage master plan. And so the total cost is $91 million. And this is through buildout in 2060. And the plan takes all of these items in the master plan and puts them on a timeline, all of these different items, what you need to achieve and when you need to start working towards those if you want to meet all of those needs by buildout. Provides that level of detail. And then the plan ends with an action and implementation, or the goals and policies, actually. I didn't update the header there. So these are the nine overriding goals that come out of the plan, and that includes things like, you know, providing access to your parks, increasing the standard of maintenance, which is very important to the residents, providing high-quality access for recreation and arts for those, for everyone in the city, looking at the complete streets approach, implementing the trail vision, and just making sure that the trail system meets needs and expectations and that they're safe, increasing the amount of natural open space within the city, which again is a priority out of the survey. And then goal nine is helping promote water conservation and similar practices by making sure that you're looking at your parks and open space facilities and doing what you can to minimize water use and being efficient with those resources, you know, so that you're sustainable and resilient in the future.
So with that, we'll ask councilmembers if they have any questions for staff or Lisa, and start with Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a good report, thank you. It seems like it's got good coverage, and you've got some good numbers on there. Do you have a source of where we can get our revenue from to cover these costs? From tax increases, from grants, fees that we charge? Do you have any suggestions, ideas for that?
Yeah, we have a whole section in the plan in chapter, I believe it's chapter five. Let me find it for you. Let's see. Okay. So page 63 of the plan, we begin laying out all of these different funding options, you know, some of, everything from bonding to different types of financing, special service districts, grants, different state and federal programs. So we've tried to provide a toolbox for you to look at, and we understand that it's a really big task to actually fund it.
Are there communities that charge fees for use of maybe tennis courts or trails or parks?
We've seen different communities that have something like a recreation fee that they tack onto one of their bills, like Harriman, I can't remember if it's $5 a month, but instead of, you know, the logistics of trying to figure out how you would charge for individual facilities, they just charge an overall fee to different residents.
A flat fee whether they use it or not.
Yes, exactly.
It's sort of sensible like a tax.
Yeah, so it's not necessarily like a use fee. And you can do that for certain facilities where you have that control and that access, but that becomes challenging for some of these general facilities.
Thank you. Thank you for the report.
Yeah.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you for your work on this and for getting some community input. I appreciate that. What are bike repair stations?
So there, it's just a post that has different tools on it that you use, like if you've got a flat tire or you need to repair, like, you know, a component on your bike that breaks down. And a lot of communities are installing these at trailheads or at certain locations along trails in case somebody has a breakdown along the way. It just helps them.
So the community supplies the repair things for the individuals' bike?
Just the tools, you know, you have to have your own, you know, if you have certain components like tubes or whatever, you have to, you have to provide that. But it's just, it's just seen as an amenity in some communities that are really pushing biking within the city.
And how do said tools not walk away?
They're mounted by a cable. They're connected by a cable to the post.
That's the same way my son's bike was connected to the mechanism at the University of Utah, and somehow it walked away.
Yeah, well, if somebody really wants, if somebody really wants it, they'll find a way.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this question is more for David Bricky. Is there a way to get this PDF online, or are we going to have it available on our website?
Absolutely. We can put it on the website, then people will link to it. And I think Tawny's here. She's nodding, probably done tomorrow sometime.
And right now...
Tonight. You can do it tonight. It's also obviously available to anybody watching. If you click on 6A, you'll be able to look at it.
Okay.
And it is on the project website as well, the draft plan, the entire draft plan, the executive summary, and the appendices are on the project website.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to answer for Councilmember Burton. Harriman does charge $5 per parcel. And so in West Jordan, $5 times the 25,000 households is about $125,000 that it would generate per month. And when I took the $91 million and divided by the 40 years to 2060, that's about $2.3 million per year, not adjusted for inflation. So, I mean, it's like, I think it's achievable if there's, if we are not afraid to implement tools to achieve the goal. So, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more questions, thank you very much. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address council on this item, please come to the microphone.
My name's Jay Thomas, and I think my address has been plenty on record, so I just want to vocalize, I think this is a great project. I think it's got some really good information. But when you guys go to start making your decision, one of the things I want to remind you of is that on the soccer fields, those properties will go away soon unless we do something, either we replace them or work out some sort of agreement. And not only for the children, even though all my children are grown up now and won't use that soccer field, but that is a tool that we can use as economic development and bringing people in to use our amenities, our hotels, our restaurants and stuff. And so I think when we're looking at the overall process, we need to make sure that we keep those kinds of amenities in place, and not just the soccer, but also the football, the youth football league, and then the little league baseball, too. All of those are really great tools to bring people in, and especially when we start doing tournaments and stuff. I think it's a super, super tool that we can use, not only to help with the children, but to help the community. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council on this issue? Seeing none of us close the public hearing, and come back to council for further discussion and/or motion, Councilmember Whitelock.
So, throughout this, it refers to our general plan that I think needs to be redone. Needs, we need to get, we need to do the same process that basically occurred with this parks plan with our general plan. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable with it because it keeps referring to the general plan in the general plan. So if the general plan changes, then what does that do to this plan, I guess is the question? And for most, just in general, for most of these public hearings, I feel they might be better voted on when the new council is here because it's a lot that we're committing to for the city for many years. And I struggle making those decisions, those long-term decisions, because we are kind of binding future council with these long-term things. And we do that all the time, but we're so close to the new council that I would like to get their input as well. So I need to know where it refers to the general plan, what does it, what happens to this plan if we vote for it and then the general plan changes?
Is there a staff member that could answer that? Scott?
Sure. Our general plan is comprised of several elements, this being one of them. And when you refer to, I think, the general plan committee, the purpose of the general plan committee, and I can read the code if you'd like, or give you the reference, Title II, Chapter IV, Section II, so 2-4-2, talks about updating the general plan, Councilmember Whitelock. It says, "The general plan committee shall serve as an ad hoc advisory committee to the planning commission and to the city council. The committee shall serve only when needed to prepare a comprehensive update to the general plan, which will be submitted to the planning commission within a specified Anyway, through the years, we've, either by necessity or desire of the council, we've looked at different elements of our general plan to update it. Later on in your agenda, for example, we have the moderate income housing section of our general plan that by state, new state law, we're required to adopt before December 1st of this year. Where the clock is ticking, and this is the last meeting, to get that adopted. If it's the desire of the council to do a top-to-bottom revamp of our general plan, the council can convene that ad hoc general plan committee, and we can take a look at that. But certainly, it's not a requirement if we're doing it element by element, such as the parks and trails, open space master plan. I don't know if that answers your question, but the council does have some discretion, if that makes sense.
I guess it doesn't really answer my question because it didn't tell me if we end up changing the overall general plan, what does it do to this? Does it not affect it? I don't personally think doing a piecemeal is necessarily the best approach, maybe. The process I'm struggling with.
If the council decides to adopt this update to this element of the general plan, and then down the road, the new council, for example, decides to do the comprehensive update, it doesn't necessarily wipe it all away. The new council does have the ability to make changes, but they're not bound by this council's decision tonight if you decide to move it forward.
With this one. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is just Scott, two, some more clarification carrying on from Councilmember Whitelock. So if we do not adopt this today, what happens? Nothing. If we do adopt it today, does it actually change the master plan then to meet what is on this plan?
Yes.
But the goals are still just goals, so that doesn't put, that doesn't mean we have to do anything they say or not do what they say. It just means the master plan now shows these trails in there that may not have been in there as described in here. So some may be paved, some may not be paved, some...
These, the purpose and intent of a general plan is general. It doesn't specify that you have to allocate $2 million to achieve this. That's a discussion for another day. It's general policy and general guideline. It's not ordinance, like a zoning ordinance where it's actual in the books and you have to follow.
So if we adopt this today, echoes on the general plan, then a developer comes and they see there's a trail going through there, does that require him to include that trail in his development if that trail is through that area that's developed? Or does it just require him to consider doing that?
Thank you for asking that question. Actually, in that regard, because we've got the other ordinances on the book, if a master plan trail happens to bisect their property or their project, we, through other parts of our zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance, can say, "Developer, this is, this trail corridor is on our general plan, and so in order to comply with and meet the criteria for your subdivision, you need to follow that aspect." So that's a good point of clarification. If the council does decide to adopt this and it changes our trails' master plan, then yes, we could, through our site plan and subdivision ordinances, require that of a developer. As a side note, as I look at this plan, I don't really see a lot of changes to our current trails plan. So it's not a huge shift.
Right. It's mostly upgrading what we have. So the best thing to do, I shouldn't ask you that, let me rephrase that. So if we were to adopt this today, this would change our master plan, then if the council decided to do additional work on the master plan in the coming year, we would just take that and use that as a guide, and we could adjust that if it's our fit, to adjust any other changes we do on our general plan. So it'd be good to have this in place prior to doing our next step.
It would be, it would be a starting point. It would be the base that the new, that the general plan committee would look at.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
I got jumped up. I wasn't next, but okay. So Scott, just to clarify what's, if I'm understanding correctly, so if this parks plan is, general plan is adopted tonight, this is the guideline, it's kind of the guardrails of the road. Don't, can't go over here, can't go that way, however broad the road is. And this... And this, this is just the parks element of a general plan. So if we adopt it tonight, we have now modified the general plan as it relates to parks and trails and open space. And a new council can make modifications, or I shouldn't say, a new council can make modifications, can convene the ad hoc general plan committee and implement this element as part of the general plan, is that how I'm understanding it?
Yes, it would be their purview to do that.
And then, as councilmember Burton said, if this is adopted tonight, it becomes part of the current general plan, it's the new updated parks portion of the general plan, and developers would need to stay within the guardrail, so to speak, of this plan.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, want to point real quickly, this is an update to our parks plan, and I'm actually not worried about binding the next council because this is a parks plan that's been in place forever, we're just updating it. And if we decide to update it in six months from now, we could update it again. It's a great plan. I think the one question I had earlier this week, someone asked me, "Why wasn't there more input from citizens?" But in this case, this plan was put in front of citizens, it was put in front of the parks committee, it was put in front of people that were able to put input into it. So I do feel comfortable with what's been presented, I've seen the process from the beginning. This actually started a few years ago when I was on the parks committee, and we're just getting the first now, so it's taken two years. I'm not afraid to say yes to this tonight and then change it in six months if we need to, that's always a possibility. So just want to kind of put that out there for the council, thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple thoughts. Just the way my brain works, analogies sometimes work best for me to kind of make sense of what's going on. So when I think of the master plan, I think of like just a plain old pine tree, just a tree that's there, and we're going to turn it into a Christmas tree by adding these different elements to it. The parks master plan is one of those elements, or one of those ornaments that goes on. So while it's out there, we, we still have the ability, if we were to upgrade or update the master plan, we could recycle the ornament later potentially, or if we overhaul the whole thing, toss it out, we could start fresh. It coincides with the framework of the master, or the general plan, but doesn't necessarily have to be completely intertwined, it can stand somewhat independent. So as I'm thinking about it in that context, kind of similar to councilmember Lamb, I would be okay approving what's been presented, but at the same time, I'd still like to have a little bit more conversation. While there has been a fair amount of outreach to some of the different groups that are out there, there was a lot of work and a lot of time that went into this, and I'd like to see a little more council conversation with regard to what this would do to the future of West Jordan. If we were to realize all of these different things, where would we be in 2060? Little side note that councilmember Burton shared with me, he leaned over and said, "Do we want to light trailways?" Like, you know, as a council, we haven't really discussed that or gotten into some of the detail that's in the plan. And I really appreciate the effort and the labor and the time that went into it. So while I would be okay approving it, I also want to make sure that we have some good conversation. I think when we have those meetings, especially with the planning commission, as the city council and the planning commission are trying to set the vision for where do we want the city to end up, these should be, these types of conversations should be kind of the baseline foundation for those talks, so that we can sit down together and say, "Where do we envision ourselves being, what sort of things do we need to change?" Another sort of non sequitur that jumped out to me was the idea of creating a sidewalk master plan. I thought we already had one of those, because I remember hearing from Dave Murphy, had a plan for building stuff out. So I wonder if there might be some overlap between what's going on with public works and what's happening in parks, and not all the pieces might be connected together. So I don't think it's perfect, I appreciate the work, and the only other thing I would share is, I think there's also room for a little bit of simplification, because as you look through the goals, 1, 2, and 3, they're all very, they're all somewhat different, but goal number 5 is to implement the trail facilities, well, that's kind of a given. Goal number 7, provide trails that are safe, I would hope that that would be built in there as well. Goal number 6 seems pretty similar, so it seems like we could consolidate this down a little bit to be a little bit, little bit broader, a little bit simpler. Nine goals is a lot to focus on, but again, there's a lot of time and effort that's been put into this, and there could easily be elements or rationale for breaking those out, for which I'm not aware, just because I haven't been, been there for all those conversations. I mean, the agenda packet tonight, the electronic version is, what, 120 pages of information that we just had a couple of days to digest. So I'll go back to what I said earlier, very much appreciate the work that's been done, I think it's important. I like, I would not be opposed to adopting this, because it is just an update and a modification, but I would like to have extended conversations with the council and the planning commission to see if this really, if all of these elements are the combined vision of the council and the planning commission and staff, or are there some elements that maybe we want to drop, or maybe some elements we want to emphasize? I'll leave it at there, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing that councilmember McConaughey said, just set off a thought in my head, and that is, these conversations do need to happen. I think we have some committees that would love to participate in these, like the parks committee that councilmember Lamb mentioned, Hope Street goes to Canada, because mine is tomorrow. And so the parks committee, I think, I would love to task them to discuss this in a meeting and come back to us with recommended tweaks or changes, but adopting this as a framework, I think, is a good plan. And maybe the sustainability committee could also take a look at it and figure out if there's a sustainability component that they want to add in and weigh in on this as well. So I would love to have our volunteer committees, we have many bright, engaged citizens in the city, it doesn't have to be the seven of us doing everything. At the end of the day, yeah, we'll have to choose to accept or not the recommendations that they bring forward, but rather than reinvent the wheel, let's, let's use the brain power that's out there. So I would just like to throw that out there as a thought, is, let's use the committees that we've got and put them, put them to work on something like this, I think that's why they're there.
Thank you, Mayor. Didn't the parks committee already review this, so we, they did, so we're good there? The sustainability committee, I don't think did. I, I realize it's not perfect, but if we don't adopt it, then we are doing nothing. We're not going to, if we wait till we're perfect, we'll do nothing. I think this is better than doing nothing. I would like to see this go forward, and then we could still take it to the sustainability committee, and then when we do our master plan, then we could continue to work with an upgrade there. So I would like to see us to go forward with this, with the work that's been done. This isn't the first time we've seen it. True, we had short window this time, but we did have a bigger window last time when we saw it, so I'm ready to go forward, if you are.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, I'm just going to make a comment, and I'll attempt a motion, but you know, just, just listening to my colleagues up here speak, how wonderful it would be having this open dialogue between different committees and studies and administration, and having this open communication about what it is we're trying to do, a set of these different silos of, here's the park master, or general plan, here's the city general plan, we want to do something with landscaping, and we have all these things, and with the open dialogue, you know, I think this would have been something, sustainability, where I, I serve as the council liaison, I would have loved to have been able to look at this from a sustainability. As I mentioned earlier, we're talking, according to this, 191 acres of new parks, how to fund them, how to fund maintenance, and I think all of us are aware that we're, we're probably at our capacity of maintaining the parks we currently have. However, I feel this is, I agree with you, councilmember Burton, that this is just an update of an existing plan, this is an update to what was adopted back in 2012, is that, so that's before I came on the council, and I lived with it, and I like our parks, we, our family uses several of the parks that are in our neighborhood. And so what I'm going to do is make a motion that we adopt ordinance 19-40, considering an amendment to the Chapter 6 Parks Recreation Trails Open Space Master Plan as referenced in the West Jordan Comprehensive General Plan.
Councilmember Burton.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Anderson, and second by councilmember Burton, discussion to the motion. Councilmember Whitelock.
I will be voting yes on this, because I do appreciate the work that has gone into it, and I can't resist to make this comment to councilmember Anderson. If we had more effective work meetings, where staff and council and volunteers could all come together and outside entities, I'll bet that could be accomplished, and that's the mechanism that many cities use.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Mayor Riding.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes 6 to 0.
Item 6B, receive public input and consider for approval ordinance 19-41, amending the moderate income housing plan of the West Jordan Comprehensive General Plan, citywide applicability, City of West Jordan applicant, Larry Gardner.
So, right from the beginning, I want to state that the city council last November updated the moderate income housing plan to be compliant with state code at that time. However, in the interim, the Department of Workforce Services, which is the enforcement mechanism for the legislature for moderate income housing, has come up with a rule on how goals and objectives are graded, as the moderate income housing plans will be graded next year by the Department of Workforce Services. And I'm not quite sure what they do with that grading, but it could eventually affect funding and that type of thing, it depends on what type of law the legislature passes. And so what this does is it, and these goals and policies, this is exactly how the rule of the Department of Workforce Services lays it out, so there's the strategic policy or goal, what are the specific outcomes, how it will be monitored, and the resources allocated, and what are the barriers to implementation to this goal. And since we're a city that has a fixed guideway, public transit station, then we have two additional goals that we need to address, and that's encourage higher density or moderate income housing next to the fixed guideway, or eliminate or reduce parking requirements for residential next to the fixed guideway. And so the vision of the moderate income housing plan, which was passed last year, is to take steps, preserve existing moderate income housing, and support where appropriate the creation of new moderate income housing. And so these are basically the goals, and the majority of them are recycling of goals that we had in the plan adopted last year. However, it does put in the outcomes, the monitoring, the resources, and the barriers. And I will say that the city's mostly doing these things, so our goal would be to continue to do these things. I'll just go through goal 1, and I'm not going to go through all the goals, but, so it is preserve existing moderate income housing, and by doing that, we assist income-qualified buyers with block grant money.
Larry, we have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. So to back up just a little bit, when you talked about the council updating the plan last year to be compliant with what state legislature has mandated.
Yes.
But now Department of Workforce Services has some additional rules. In here, I'm seeing on, you know, I'm not sure what page this is of the electronic, Rule 90...
Yeah, that's it, that's the rule.
On or before December 1st, 2019, we must make certain elements to comply with, with these requirements. Do we currently comply with those, or no?
Yeah, well, the requirement is that we update our moderate income housing plan before December 1st, 2019. That legislation was passed two sessions ago, and so cities were given actually almost two years to come in compliance with that, but we, we chose to do it last year.
Okay, so the update that we made last year did satisfy that requirement.
Keeps us in.
We're not under time constraint to adopt this tonight, it's the last meeting before December 21st, or December 1st, 2019.
My only concern is that on December 1st, the Department of Workforce Services is going to take all of the plans that the municipalities have provided, and that's how they will grade our moderate income housing plan. So this probably won't be looked at for another year, is what I'm saying. So if there's any funding issues that come up in this next legislative session that depend upon a good, good grade on the moderate income housing plan, that could be affected.
And to fully answer, so we have an existing plan, but it doesn't include all of these new elements or requirements, if you want to call them that. So if they were to take our existing plan, if this isn't adopted this evening, we could be penalized, or, it's an unknown, it's a moving target, to be quite honest.
This, this will come out more blunt than I intend for it to be, but really, my question is, are we being presented with something for the first time that we're being forced to pass tonight because there's a deadline that it must be done and approved by December 1st of 2019? Thank you.
So, Mayor, you have a follow-up question? And Rob, this might be for you. What if we don't? What's the penalty? That's unknown.
Well, the specific dollar amount's unknown, the penalty is that the city can lose transportation impact funding and transit transportation impact funding that's passed on through the city through the Wasatch Front Regional Council. This is the bill where the affordable housing in the city was tied to the receipt of transportation funds from the state.
One further question, why are we getting it tonight? Why have we not had any time to give input? And we're getting some major changes to what our city would look like, and I don't think citizens have had input other than now, and I don't feel a lot of citizens...
The planning commission also, it's gone before the planning commission, so...
Okay. But we haven't had time to have any discussion on this, so...
And I believe what I could do is if you don't want to pass it tonight, which would be perfectly appropriate, I could contact the person at the Department of Workforce Services, say we're in compliance, but we're amending our goals, and then if the council wanted to take, you know, I don't know how long you need to take, they're very simple goals, and they're right out of the former plan, but if that would make it more palatable to the city council, then that's fine.
And Rob, so if we, if we ask for an extension, will we be okay?
I don't know. I'd have to look in the statute. I'd have to review it, I haven't read it for about nine months, so I can't tell you off the top of my head.
We're, we're not out of compliance now, I want to add that, we're not out of compliance.
So, so my question is, if we're not out of compliance, then there really isn't a need to adopt this tonight because we're compliant?
Yes.
Is that what I'm understanding?
But what I'm saying is that the Department of Workforce Services, who grades the plans, they'll be using our old set of goals, which will not have this implementation that they grade upon. So they might still look at them and say, "That's fine, it might get us a high grade." I think it's just safer to use their format, and more specific, more detailed goals than the more general goals of consider this and consider that, and so...
Tonight for me is about communication. So I don't know, I don't know what, what else I can, I can say, it, it's our last council meeting before the deadline. It's kind of, pass it because we have to pass it.
No, I will contact the Department of Workforce Services tomorrow, and I will, I'll explain what is happening. I'm sure that, I'm confident they'll be fine with that, if I communicate with them.
Okay, so, but, but we're in compliance, we're not violating the law.
No, we're not violating the law.
And our, our consequence could potentially be some variable amount of transportation dollars, if at all.
It may or may not, because... It may or may not, because it depends on what they choose to tie to it, so.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mayor. I may have more.
Continue, please, Larry.
So, they're just goals, and they follow the format. I'm not going to go through all of them because it will take much more time than is needed. Really, goal one is to continue to use block grant money for assisting quote, income-qualified homeowners, and what that does is it keeps them in a moderate income housing situation, you know, seniors take advantage of the repair program that the city puts, you know, over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year into. And then there's also a forty thousand revolving loan fund, and it's generally senior citizens that take, that use those emergency repair funds. And then there's also a ten thousand dollar rental assistance program for income-qualified people, and they generally fall in the moderate income, they have to fall within the moderate income housing scale. So the barrier is, there's really not any barriers to the home repair program, down payment assistance program. I talked to our CDBG administrator, and he said the problem with the housing market now is seventy-five hundred dollars is limiting, and he's following HUD's recommendation, and that will be raised shortly to ten thousand dollars per applicant. And the rest of the goals are similar. They dispel out how the goal's going to be implemented, how it's going to be tracked, how we, and then what are the resources allocated, and what are the barriers to implementation, so. That's all I've got. Any more questions?
Councilmember Anderson has another question.
I do, not directed at you, Larry, but maybe Rob Walls. So in my printed packet, it talks about the general information is state code ten-nine-eight-four-oh-three, and then on page two of my packet, and I'm assuming this is DWS rule ninety-three-hundred-five, it says honor before December first, twenty nineteen, an entity identified in section ten-nine-four-oh-one shall amend the general plan to comply with the respective section and submit a plan, submit the plan for moderate income housing to HCDD as provided in section ten. So, at least rule ninety is saying honor before December first, an entity shall amend the general plan, and then later on, it says in paragraph two on page three, beginning December first, twenty twenty, and annually thereafter, the legislative body of each entity described in the above referenced sections shall complete an annual moderate income housing reporting form and submit the form. So, I'm not an attorney, but I've heard attorneys say shall is definitive. That we shall adopt a plan honor before, so we're in compliance, but rule ninety says that we have to amend the general plan to comply with the respective section. Can you help me with that?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking, but I agree that shall means shall.
Well, so on rule ninety, I mean, it, like, we're talking about that we're in compliance, and here we are, the last meeting before December first, and it's saying that we shall amend the general plan to comply with the respective section, submit the plans for moderate income housing to HCDD. And then later on that third page in my printed packet, paragraph two, beginning December first, twenty twenty, and annually thereafter, the legislative body of each entity shall complete an annual moderate income housing reporting form and submit the completed form to HCDD.
Right.
So, again, do we, do we have a choice?
The legislation, as I recall, which enabled the Department of Workforce Housing to promulgate these rules, provided that by December thirty-first, there needed to be an update to the plan, and then every year thereafter, a report on the current condition of the plan.
So we could, again, you're the attorney.
Yeah, but I'm not the Department of Workforce Services attorney who's going to tell their staff what they will or won't accept.
Can I?
Right, but you're a attorney.
But I agree, it says what it says.
Can I interject something?
You may.
We're in compliance with the moderate income housing plan right now. We're in compliance with reporting. The reporting used to be done on a biennial basis every two years, and now the legislature is requiring it every year. I think that if you continue this item to one of the meetings in December, as long as it's done by December thirty-first, I think, you know, I'm going to talk to the guy tomorrow, but I think that that will be sufficient for them to compare, grade the moderate income housing plan. For all I know, they may have already graded ours, so, since we submitted it last year.
Right, so it's December first, not the thirty-first?
That's for the moderate income housing plan. I'm proposing an amendment to it, and so that's what I'm, we're in compliance. I've gone on the Department of Workforce Services website on their spreadsheet in West Jordan is compliant at this time.
Okay.
So we're not out of compliance. So if you continue this item, I, you know, then you continue it, and I feel that the council should be given more time if they want that.
Well, for the, for the two council members elect that are in the audience, and for the council that's remaining, at least what I'm reading on page three, is that this will come up again prior to December first, twenty twenty.
That's a, that's a report. All it is is a report on, and you've seen those reports as a council before.
But we ought to know about it, before December first, twenty twenty.
Yes, December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Well, this says December first, twenty twenty. Is the report different?
December first, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, so I'm communicating. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of communication, I'll communicate a couple of things as well. First of all, the staff report here is the planning commission staff report, not the city council staff report. There is no, on the, on the online link, there is no planning commission minutes at all.
Okay.
So we have just the planning commission. It's the planning commission recommendation, planning commission forward deposit recommendation, at least I think that's what it is. There's just no.
No, the planning commission recommendation is that they forward a positive recommendation to the city council.
Okay. Second thing I'd like to see is this has a kind of a legislative version. Usually when they get a, you know, a legislation update, you have strikeouts, and then the underline is the additional part and stuff, and this has all new language. It doesn't say what is carried over from the original. So starting on page twelve of the, it's on page twenty of the PDF, the page number on the bottom of the page says twelve. Page twenty of the PDF starts underlining everything, and everything's underlined, so I don't know what the existing plan looks like. All I know is that this is new language. What's the old language? What are we changing? What's, you know what I mean?
The plans, yeah, okay, fair enough.
So in other words, what I'd like to see as if we bring this forward at another meeting, whether in the next meeting or the one after that, or whenever, I'd like to see what it is compared to what it's going to, like we do when we update legislation, when we update the code. I know this isn't the code, this is the general plan, so it's a little bit different, but yeah, there's just, because I'd love to go through these goals and say, well, I don't like this one, but I do like this one, but I don't like this one, but I do like this one. But you, your comment that most of this is lifted out of the existing goals.
Mm-hmm.
I want to make sure I'm not saying, well, I don't like this one. Well, you approved that one, you know, three months ago, or whatever, you know, six months ago. I want to make sure that I know what I'm talking about, so.
And if it comes back, I'll get it to you.
Yeah, do we have?
But for reference, that plan is on the website.
It is on the website. Do we know where it is?
It's under departments, planning, under planned, moderate income housing plan, so.
Okay, I will look for it there in the meantime, but those are just the comments I had. It's needs a minute, and then a different way of looking at that.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none. Thank you, Larry. I will open the public hearing. Those wishing to address counsel on this issue, please come to the microphone.
I'll jump in. Might as well not have a public hearing without any comments at all. Kelvin Green. Not speaking for the planning commission, but we did consider this. We looked at the goals, and really what, what we, what's occurred is the goal, the goals are in the moderate, the goals are already in the moderate income housing plan. This just follows the workforce services plan that deals with the outcome, the monitoring, the resources, and the barriers, and identifies in more detail. It doesn't, it doesn't change from what, from what we, from what I saw when I, when we dealt with this before, that it doesn't, it doesn't change the moderate income housing plan that's currently in the general, or that's in the plan. And all this does is add some more detail on what we perceive as the barriers and what we perceive as the outcome, and it doesn't really change stuff. It does pull it, put it in compliance with the workforce services rule. For me, honestly, I'd rather see this adopted, make sure that we meet all of the workforce services deadlines, and then if we want to change it, then we can go back through and make, and re, if we want to relook at the whole moderate income housing plan, let's look at it, but let's, let's not, my opinion, let's not give workforce, workforce services an excuse to ding us. If they decide to grade the, or enforce the plan, let's use their format, and let's not give them an excuse to ding the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council, please come to the microphone?
Just so I'm informed on what moderate income housing is, what is moderate income housing? What does that address? Does anybody, can anybody answer that for me? I know it's on your.
Larry, would you be so kind?
Could you also give us your name, sir?
Oh, Justin Blackmore, seven-one-zero-nine West Cog Point Drive.
So in statute, the legislature has determined that cities need to create a moderate income for all members of the community, so they can have housing in the community. And what the moderate income housing follows had income limits, or income limits, what you can make and the housing you can afford, and it's usually thirty percent of the area median income for the county, which is sixty thousand dollars, so your payment couldn't be over X, and then it goes to low income, and then moderate income, and so it's thirty, fifty, and eighty percent of the area median income would qualify you in one of those sections as meeting, you know, the moderate income housing, and then you would base what the housing prices are, and if you could afford that. So it's really an affordability thing for members of the community that are below eighty percent of the area median income, so, and I'll, I'll give you this, and you can, that has our moderate income housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address counsel on this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and come back to council for further discussion and/or motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick, because we've still got a number of public hearings. It's getting late, and there is a lot still on the agenda. I agree with Councilmember Jacob. It'd be nice to take some time to go through and say what goals we like, what goals we support, what goals we'd like to modify, some of these right off the bat, that I am, goal number one, yeah, awesome, continue CDGB block grants, perfect. Goal number two, create or allow for and reduce regulations related to accessory dwelling units in residential zones. I'd like to have conversation about that and the impact and where. I like the goal stated of determine if ADU should be allowed in other residential zones. I, I really don't like the rest of it that's out there. Goal number five, this is the one that had me scratching my head. Reduce parking requirements in all transit overlay districts to one space per multifamily unit regardless of the number of bedrooms. So as we're thinking about our TODs, where we're trying to encourage high-density multifamily development, we're saying, go over there. We're also saying only one car per, only one parking stall per unit. This next one is the one that I really have issue with. Require on-street parking in all transit-oriented developments. Then as you go down to monitoring, one of the barriers identified is fear that reduced parking will lead to congestion and on-street parking issues. Well, I thought our goal was specifically to create on-street parking issues. I'd really like to have conversation about that. So while I realize there might be some potential funding at risk this particular year, I don't think it's in the long-term interest of the city to rush through this and state certain goals, then try and play cleanup later. Yeah, I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment that was made by Larry, by the staff, that these goals were lifted out of the existing moderate income housing plan, which I found on the website and I'm looking at, and they're not the same. For example, goal number two in the existing plan says where appropriate, create new moderate income units. Doesn't say anything about accessory dwelling units. It doesn't say reduce regulations related, nothing of that nature is in here at all. This is brand-new stuff. I can see why it was all underlined now. What's missing is what was stricken through is what's missing. There were only, oh no, there were only three goals, not four, on the existing plan. There are four, five, five goals in the proposed plan. So at least two of them are brand-new, if not the completely rewritten ones being brand-new as well. So there is more new here than, than kind of what I was led to believe a minute ago. I'm not necessarily going to weigh in on each one, but I agree that conversation needs to happen. I'm happy to have it now if everybody's game. We all want to sit down and, let's chat ADUs, and let's chat parking requirements and TODs, and let's chat about other acronyms, because acronyms are fun. I just don't think this is, this is where the majority of the council wants to have that discussion. I'm open to it, but just throwing that out there.
Councilmember Anderson?
I'm glad that Councilmember McConaughey picked those goals, because those were goals that I had questions with. And the one question I have is that one space per multifamily unit regardless of the number of bedrooms, is there a study that shows that people that move into TODs have less cars, are willing to take tracks to the grocery store, take public transit to the grocery stores? I see them using mass transit, getting consistently to and from work, but I don't know that they necessarily have fewer cars. So if I've got a, like, like my family, we have, we have three vehicles, because I have three drivers. And we live near a track station, and my son uses tracks to go to work, but he uses his car when he's not doing work stuff.
Is there a study?
Yeah, is it fact-based, or is it just an assumption?
I can't cite one tonight, but I'm sure there is. But one thing I want to reiterate is the two additional goals, Councilmember Jacob, are the legislature put in the fixed guideway thing that we need to be compliant with, those goals. And so those are where the extra two came from. And I'd like to reiterate, they're just goals, and you can either choose not to enforce the goals if you don't like them, or they can be modified next year, when the, it sounds like you want a modification of the general plan, so it can be done at that time. But at this point, they're just goals. It's not committing the city to anything. And so what I'm hearing is it's already started a conversation, so.
It started a conversation. I agree. So, so when you say that the new one requires a fixed guideway, and that's not in our plan, so does that mean we're not in compliance, and we have to do this by December first? So, so there's a rule that's fixed guideway, and it's not in our current plan, so we'll just get dinged by the Department of Workforce Services for something because we haven't adopted that part, right? adopted that part, right? Is that, is that what I understood?
There's a potential for that. I don't believe it'll happen though. So, you know, and if you want to continue this to another meeting, I'm fine with that.
Hey, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Whitelock.
So Brian, this question is probably for Public Works because goal number two says create or allow for and reduce regulations related to accessory dwelling units in residential zones. But when we, when we, um, planned for the general plan, we put in pipes for what we planned for. So if now we allow ADUs in these areas, what does that do to our infrastructure? I know what it does to our roads, but what does it do to our water, our sewer?
We would have to go back and, and look at it, reevaluate it.
That's why when, when we do look at it and talk about it, the, as staff in the council, oftentimes you restrict the size of those accessory dwelling units to not overwhelm existing systems. So yes, that is part of the discussion that we would need to have.
Yeah, so that, that, I'm not opposed to ADUs, but I am concerned that our infrastructure isn't built for them. And I've learned infrastructure is very costly. Your department is very costly, Brian.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't know if this needs to be in motion or not, but my recommendation would be that we take no action tonight and rather leave this for a conversation. I, I don't want to try and bring it back in December. Um, there's still too many things going on with the change in form of government. Um, bigger, bigger picture, um, my, my thought process as I went through the agenda for tonight was there are a lot of public hearings for items that we're proposing ordinance to be passed, but we haven't really discussed them as a, as a council. We do have a number of workshops for things that we've discussed repeatedly in the past that are high priority. The water rates for one, and then we also have the, um, code changes for former government that are, that are workshop items. I worry that if we spend too much time on these items, we're going to shortchange the things that have been following the proper process and coming as they should, where I would have been, I, I, I think this should have been done first as a, as a workshop item before being agendized with the legislative version ready to, ready to be passed in public hearing the first time we're hearing about it. I would propose that we take no action on this one tonight and table it to, um, sometime in first quarter of the new year. And again, because this is such a big change, um, review this with both, in a meeting with combined city council and planning commission and obviously the mayor's office.
Would you want to put that into a motion?
It's not really tabling the item, um, but, but taking no action and directing the future, asking the future council to, to schedule a meeting. So I'm not quite sure.
I think we probably need to vote on moving that out though, so.
I don't think we need to vote for no action. I guess, I guess we could move to deny, but I worry about the signal that that would send to Department of Workforce Services if we're going to say, you know, we'd like to, we'd like to discuss it. We're changing the awkward time of year. We want to wait till a new council's here to set a date with them.
Why not just table it then and vote on that?
Would legal be okay tabling with a date uncertain?
That would make it easier for you to revisit it again. If you, if you just pass by, then it will have to be scheduled again on the agenda and you'd have to vote in the meeting to bring it up again. But if you just table it to a time to be determined or whatever, that would work fine. Make it easier procedurally.
No, I, I don't want to continue it because if we do make changes, I would like a fresh public hearing with fresh information for the public to weigh in on. So I'm okay with a fresh public hearing later, but I'll move to table action on ordinance nineteen dash forty-one to a date to be determined.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Um, is that the only one you want to do that for?
Um, I would like, because yeah, it's a similar thing with the other public hearings, but I want to make sure those other public hearings get opened and closed. But I think we should probably go the same route with the other public hearings that are on the agenda too, so.
Um, I will second Chris's motion.
We have a motion by councilmember McConaughey, a second by councilmember Whitelock, discussion to that motion. Councilmember Burton, do we have workshops scheduled for our December meetings yet? Could we put this on a workshop in December and still make it happen before the end of the year and still keep up on the other things we have to do by the end of the year? Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I would suggest probably not. If we're going to have a workshop item on something in December, then action would either take, we'd have to have the workshop on December fourth so we could take action with that council on December eleventh. So December fourth, that's our next meeting. I, I don't think it's advantageous to try and cram this in for the next meeting. I would leave it for the next council and, and do it then rather than try and squeeze it in in December. So I would say no.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And councilmember Burton, there may be, um, public meeting or public hearing notice requirements that we can't, uh, meet with the fourth and the eleventh. Um, so I don't, I don't know that we can, we can make that, make that work.
Sorry.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. If we scheduled it now for the public hearing for the second side, second Wednesday in December, we could do that, still have the public hearing then and still have our workshop after the public hearing's been notified, noticed.
But was your motion for the first quarter of the next year?
It is, yes. And that, that was my question is are we limiting ourselves in case we wanted to make this work?
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think with all that we have on our plate with the change in form of government and getting the new things, I think that is, uh, and my, my opinion is that would be an adequate resp-, adequate response to Department of Workforce Services and that the new council tackle this. And it may be beneficial to have a workshop with the planning commission, um, and have their input and items with that. We've got some new faces, uh, we have a new form of government. And, uh, you know, I think, I think a workshop sometime in the first quarter, uh, with the planning commission and the, and the council to address this and then have a plan going forward, whether it's part of strategic plan or it always comes up the first quarter, uh, each year because we now know that there has to be an updated plan December first every year. So that, I would be supportive of the motion.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Reiting?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
And councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item six C, receive public input and consider for approval ordinance nineteen dash forty-two, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code, Section thirteen dash five C dash four, permitted and conditional uses, adding accessory dwelling units and Section thirteen dash eight dash three, accessory uses, buildings and structures. Citywide applicability, City West Jordan applicant Larry Gardner.
Mayor? Well, I, I guess I'd ask before we start this, if there's a desire from the council to take a five-minute recess before we continue, I would make that a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five-minute recess. Reconvening our city council meeting and we're working on item six C, which is to receive public input. We read that and, uh, so we'll come to Larry.
Do you have any questions for me?
Councilmember McConaughey?
Similar question as before. Is there any issue if we were to table this? And discuss it at the same meeting, Q one, with the joint city council, planning commission?
No, not at all.
Thank you. We haven't opened that one yet.
Okay, I'm going to open the, the public comment on this issue. So if there's anyone here that would like to address counsel on this issue, please come to the microphone. Timing is everything, isn't it?
I actually missed a test to come here tonight and so I'm making it up, but, um, okay, so first off, thank you for allowing me to give my public comment.
Can you give your name?
Yes, my name is McKenna Finch and I'm a recent resident to West Jordan. I'm really, really excited to see you guys had ADUs on the docket tonight. Um, so in regards to West Jordan, Jordan City Ordinance nineteen forty-two, I find the proposed ordinance to be discriminatory and the legality questionable. City staff has stated the intent of this ordinance is to allow, is to only allow ADUs in PC developments that are new and completely undeveloped so that they are and or could be part of the neighborhood fabric from the beginning. Many older or already built homes in West Jordan already have illegal ADUs in them. Your infrastructure may not have been built for it, but it is accommodating it. Many homeowners would like to legalize their ADU operations, but fear backlash. I foresee several potential legal issues by restricting ADUs to only new neighborhoods. The Fair Housing Act protects people from discrimination when they are renting or buying a home, getting a mortgage, seeking housing assistance, or engaging in other housing-related activities. Your ordinance will potentially violate this federal act in several ways. While this ordinance is being enacted to help affordable housing, it only helps ensure that there are more rental units available. To buy a new home is not affordable. Older homes are more affordable for lower income people, people looking to buy a, a first-time home, historically discriminated people and young families. ADUs can make older and cheaper homes even more affordable, which is why the ordinance should extend the privileges and responsibilities of a legal ADU to them. Second, economic restriction. This ordinance prevents older neighborhoods from being enabled to redevelop. By allowing ADUs into older neighbor, older neighborhoods legally, you allow new homeowners to reinvest rent money into their property and revitalize some of these dying neighborhoods. This ordinance will concentrate the ADU rental pool and its financial benefits in only newer areas. This can create an even larger financial disparity between the older neighborhoods and the newer neighborhoods. This ordinance restricts someone who lives in an older home from using their property to its full economic benefit, while their neighbors in a newer neighborhood are able to maximize these benefits. Additionally, I believe you should reconsider the size you're restricting ADUs to. Salt Lake City, Draper, Provo and other ma- major cities along the Wasatch Front allow ADUs to occupy a larger space in their homes. I also believe that on-street parking should not be relied on for the city. It's a liability and begging for a negligence ch- case. Just wait until a snowplow accidentally knocks a mirror off of a car. There should be more than one off-street parking space required for the ADUs.
I do have a closing paragraph. I'm almost done. I have a closing paragraph. You don't have to let me read it, but it was good. You can email it to us.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would, uh, like to hear, uh, address city council tonight regarding this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for further discussion and/or motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Jamie, could you read back the motion from the prior so I could say that again?
Councilmember McConaughey moved to table this item to a date uncertain, but within the first quarter of twenty twenty in a workshop with the planning commission. Councilmember Whitelock seconded the motion.
That would be my same motion.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to that motion. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of that motion and I want to say thank you to the individual who did speak, who looks like she has left, for those very well put together and well thought-out comments, better than many that come to public hearing. So I appreciate those, uh, those thoughts and I'll be in favor of the motion. Thanks.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo what Councilmember Jacob said. It also goes back to the need for clear communication and making sure the council's prepared for the various items that come up on the agenda because these items do have an impact directly on residents and they make an effort to come out here and be heard. We want to be sure that they have the best information possible. They know the council's thinking and what direction we're going so that their comments can be appropriately tailored so that we know how to best represent and best serve them. So although she's not here, I would say again, echo that, that thanks for the well-thought-out, well-prepared comments and it's sad that we weren't able to hear the last little bit because of the three-minute time limit, but would look forward to that email. So, thank you, Mayor.
Seeing no more discussion, let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Mayor Riding.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item six D. Receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance nineteen dash forty-three, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code adding Article One, Planned Community Form-Based, PCFB Zone, to Title thirteen, Citywide Applicability, City of West Jordan applicant Larry.
Do you have any questions for me?
Councilmember McConaughey.
Same question as last time. Is this something that would not cause an issue if it were to wait till that same combined city council planning commission meeting in Q one?
I think it'd be better if this came forth sooner than later.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Um, I do have a couple of questions in regard to this one. Within the PC zone, will there be a ratio of, of single versus multi?
This new ordinance?
Yeah.
No, it would, because it's an all-inclusive zone. And so they would not follow the ratio of the cap and grade now.
Okay. Also, um, will there be incentives put in there to encourage putting in affordable housing? I didn't see any of that.
Not in this zone. You could add that if you wanted to.
Um, if I were looking to do a planned community right now in our city, I wouldn't have to have this. Would I, would not, couldn't I just submit a development agreement? And then still move forward?
A development agreement?
A development, what is it that we're doing? Is that what I want?
I don't believe you can override an ordinance with a development agreement, but I'm not an attorney, so.
I think to answer your question, Councilmember Whitelock, we do have an existing PC, Planned Community Zone that developers could use. This Planned Community Form-Based or PCFB gives some slightly different tools and it creates some extra flexibility for developers. So there is a difference.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Actually, I'm gonna speak later. Thank you, though.
Seeing nothing further, I will open this item up for public comments in this public hearing item. Anyone wishing to address city council, please come to the microphone. And state your name, please.
Rich Sontag, Daybreak Communities. I'm familiar with the zone being proposed because I've read the draft ordinance and it gives a developer like ourselves the kind of tools we need to do the kind of development we've done down at Daybreak, which is based not on Euclidean zoning principles of having everything alike in an area, but on deliberate mixing of products, types, sizes, setbacks, heights, densities, so that you're creating a community based on different types of centers, each of which create an individual source of energy and, um, some are villages, some are neighborhood centers, some are based on recreation. But what it does is it creates activity in the community versus spread out things that are all the same that actually aren't good streetscapes for people to interact and communicate within a community. So, uh, I, some of you have been out and taken the tour I've given of Daybreak and have seen how we do this. Uh, it requires a certain amount of flexibility in zoning and tools that you can use as you're plating. You combine the uses, you put them together, they are all individually reviewed by the planning commission as you do it, but it lets you create different types of mixed residential centers that create a lot more life in a community. You can focus, um, the energy not on a street, but on placemaking and it's just a tool that we've used very effectively, found to be very beneficial. Uh, I've spent several months trying to fit the kind of development we do into the existing PC zone and it would have required a very thick development agreement, which would essentially have rewritten a lot of your ordinances. This type of zone allows us to put together a development plan that reflects the principles we're used to without having to specifically rewrite all of your other ordinances. And I think approved in a case-by-case basis, in a form-based zone plan, you're gonna have some really good outcomes that you otherwise won't get in the, in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council on this issue? Seeing none, our close the public hearing, come back to council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I worry that the rapidness with which the last two motions I made perhaps detracted from, from my intent. With this one, I'm still the same mindset where I think it would be appropriate to wait until that combined planning commission with, or combined meeting with the city council and the planning commission to review this. But the reason goes back to a lot what Mr. Sontag suggested. When we, when many of us had the opportunity to go through and see neighboring communities and what they had been able to do with that form-based zoning, I want to be able to sit down in a format where we can say, okay, we saw the end product and we know what we like, we know what we want to get to. How do we wordsmith this to get there? There may be phrases that we have concerns with and it would be very nice to have folks. I know our, our attorney, Mr. Wall, has been through quite a bit of that. I know Mr. Langford can help us with that conversation, but this is a substantial change to what we've been doing as a city and I want to make sure that I understand how the language has been crafted, make sure that as some of these things pop up, I mean, the prior one I mentioned, there were certain goals that I didn't like. Well, maybe one of those things I don't like, I don't understand and that's going to prevent us from getting to the end result that I really want to get to. So it might have come across earlier as a little bit flippant when I suggested, let's table this so we can have a meeting with everybody. But it's because I really do want to hear from the experts how, how this is intended to get us to the product that we're all envisioning and make sure our visions aligned rather than us trying to, in a more formal setting like we have right now, say, I like this, I don't like this, and make decisions that might be consequential and incredibly negative without us knowing it. So, um, did you have a comment or a motion? So I will cede the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is where I wanted to comment. So, um, as, as much as I've been promoting form-based zoning, probably at least more than a year, um, I'm happy that it's here and I wish that I would be up here when it passed, passes, hopefully. Um, I think this is a strong future for what we need to do in our, in our city as we, as we make adjustments and shift and we move away from the Euclidean zoning. So I'm hoping with the new administration, um, and the new council and having a, a meeting, and I do agree that needs to be sooner rather than later, you know, even in, in advance of the two items that we just, um, tabled. I think this is the future where the, the city can have control over the end product, can have control over the infrastructure as it pertains to water and sewer and roads and how those products all intermix with the traditional neighborhoods. So, um, as, as much as I would love to, to pass this, it's very hard because this is where I truly believe we need to go is to form-based zoning and so, I'm sorry, because this is, this is kind of a big deal to me, this form-based. And so, um, I'm gonna move to table nineteen dash forty-three, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal City Code, adding Article L. But I would like it to be on the, on the strategic plan. I think I'd like to put it there. So that'll be my motion.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Second with comment to follow.
We have a count, a motion by Councilmember Anderson and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. With the change in form of government, I anticipate strategic planning will look very different than it has in the past. And I'm thinking all three of these would be prime, prime elements to discuss at that meeting, though I didn't, didn't want to put in my earlier motion to have it specifically then because I'd like to wait till the new council's here so we can chat with all of them, make sure everyone's going to be available because this is very significant for the direction of the city. So, um, but, but, but that is my intention really to have these be the primary components of, of strategic planning, um, if that's the, the will of the majority of the council.
Councilmember Burton.
I'm not opposed to having a discussion at the strategic planning meeting. However, I think we're very limiting ourselves again. We don't have a strategic planning meeting scheduled yet, so we may want to have some discussion prior to that and would this keep us from having discussion prior to that meeting? And there may end up being more than one strategic planning meeting. So I, I think limited to that might restrict us more than we want to be restricted.
Okay, so. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. Then I will amend my motion to table this item. Well, I, I would like it during the first quarter, but I, I want it to preempt the last two. I, I like, if, if there's a priority, I want it to be first because I think this is, this is critical to me and I think this is more polished than the other two. So that would be my amended motion to table this first quarter, but preempt the last two tableings. Can I do that? Prioritize, sorry, prioritize over the, the previous two. Is that?
There's your second.
My second stands.
Any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Mayor Riding.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item seven, consent items. We've been asked to pull consent items C and D.
May I have B as well?
We've asked to pull all the consent items except A. By Councilmember Whitelock. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to approve, uh, well, resolution nineteen dash one ninety-six.
Councilmember Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just suggest that after this, rather than going through the consent items individually that have been pulled, we hit on business item A and then come back to the consent calendar.
Seeing no more, let's vote.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
And Mayor Riding.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead, seven B. Approve resolution nineteen dash one ninety-seven. Councilmember Whitelock.
So just every time I go through these, it kind of makes me sad and this time it made me sad because on the, on the items that, that have not been claimed is a little Spider-Man bike. So Chief, once again, what can we do to get these items back to their owners? Because I just see some little boy out there so sad.
Well, the first thing we'd encourage people to do is, is take pictures of the bike, take pictures of the serial number. Uh, they're pretty easy to find, but you can call our crime prevention people and they'll tell you how to do that. And we can also get bicycle licenses. Unfortunately, some folks think they still live in an area where someone's not gonna come and take a bicycle out of your front yard that's laying there. And if we don't have any means of tracking back, although we do our very best, somebody rides that bike for four or five blocks, there's just no way an officer's gonna get it back. So that's, that's distressing to me as, as well, both as a, a citizen, a police chief, and, and a grandfather who's bought a couple of bikes that have been stolen. Uh, I, I, I don't think we need to speak to anything else on that list. I will just represent as, as I have in the past that the police department has done, a yeoman's work of, a person's work of tracking down the owners where, where we could. I would not mind some direction for the council if I might share with, with Councilmember Whitelock and, and the, the council, um, something I've researched with respect to those bikes. I don't think I can get the Spider-Man bike back to that kid. But what I could do in the future is come to the council with some, um, language and ordinance modification. I, I've had discussions with our new surplus, our new purchasing agent and also with the attorney that advises the police department and I've also gone and met with the people at the Salt Lake Bicycle Collective and also spoken to a couple of police chiefs in other cities about this issue. I know to a lot of people, it's not a big deal. To me, it's a big deal. And, and if, if I felt that there was a sense of, uh, that the council might embrace this, we would move forward with a, uh, an agreement with the Salt Lake Bicycle Collective that they would come and pick up surplus bicycles, they would recondition them. Some of our employees in the police department actually volunteered to participate in the reconditioning and, and then our kids in South, excuse me, West Jordan, south end of the valley, South Jordan participates, um, well, a number of the cities in the south end of the valley. The, the kids in our community who can't afford bikes would have the opportunity to go to the Salt Lake Bicycle Collective and be able to obtain a bicycle at, at no charge. Honestly, folks, and I think you, you know this, the bicycles, they go to an auctioneer. The city gets pennies, I mean, just pennies, and they don't benefit any of our local kids. So that's, I, again, Councilmember Whitelock, we really try. I, I get it. There is a kid out there that probably saved up, you know, part of an allowance or something or some grandpa bought that bike at Walmart. I don't know. But, uh, that's just a, that's just a thought and if, if you think you might be receptive to that, I'll move forward pretty darn quickly.
You know what? I, I bet that we would be. Um, but I would request that you, you put something together, show it to us like in a workshop meeting and then put it on the agenda for the vote. I think it's a good process. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there a motion on this one? Councilmember Jacob?
If there's no further comment, I move to approve Resolution nineteen dash one ninety-seven.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Whitlock. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item seven C, approve Resolution nineteen dash one ninety-eight. Councilmember Whitlock?
I polled, asked to poll C and D and they're, they're similar, so if, if we want to do them together, we certainly can. I called Mr. Clegg to find out about this because a resident was concerned that we were signing multi-year contracts and I want everyone to know that when we do that, there is always a clause in there that says for any reason, we can get out of that contract for either side. It's usually thirty to sixty days notice that we can get out of those. These two that we're looking at tonight are five-year contracts, although there are over four hundred vendors that are out there that carry some of these products, only two responded and so we followed procurement procedures and chose one. And what I like about it is that for at least the first year, we're locked into those prices. So I think that's a good thing. So I hope that, that the residents understand that when we do sign these multi-year contracts, there is a get out of it clause built in so that if something happens, we can renegotiate or just choose to be done. So I hope that can, can give some comfort and I appreciate Mr. Clegg always answering my questions. Thank you. And I'm ready to make a mo- oh, no.
Councilmember Burton?
I just want to add that when we do the multi-year contracts like that, that helps get our price down as well because they know there's some continuity going through. And then I also think it's really good, each of these are two different companies, both of them are West Jordan companies and I think that is really good too. So I'm, I was real pleased when I read through this and saw what you did, so thank you, Brian. I think you handled that very well.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Hey, if no one has anything else, I will move that we approve consent agenda items seven C and D.
Councilmember Anderson?
I will gladly second Councilmember Whitlock's motion.
We have a motion by Councilmember Whitlock and a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now convene as the Board of Canvassers and approve Resolution nineteen dash two hundred, accepting and approving the results of the municipal general election held November fifth, twenty nineteen, as shown on the canvas report. Jamie?
As usual, we did not get the numbers until the last minute, so I apologize that both, both the Board of Canvassers and also the public did not have access to these sooner, but that's sort of the nature of elections. The mayor-elect for the next term will be Dirk Burton with fifty-two point one three percent of the vote. The council member-at-large-elect for the same term is, actually for a two-year term, is Kelvin Green with forty-six point seven seven percent. Councilmember-elect for Council One is Councilmember Chris McConaughey with fifty point six eight percent of the vote. Councilmember-elect for Council District Two is Melissa Werthen with eighty-one point ninety-two percent of the vote. Councilmember-elect for Council Three is Councilmember Jacob with fifty-seven point forty-seven percent of the vote. And finally, council-elect for Council District Four is Mr. David Pack with fifty-seven point one nine percent of the vote. Some of the interesting statistics that I like to point out mostly to let the public know truly how closely Salt Lake County keeps track of your ballots. This information is now available on our website, so if you didn't get a chance to view it earlier, you can certainly go on there and do it now. We have forty-eight thousand one hundred six eligible voters in the city, of whom only thirteen thousand nine hundred twenty-three people voted. That's a turnout of twenty-eight point ninety-four percent. It doesn't sound like a lot, but that's actually pretty good compared to previous elections. Of those ballots, twenty-eight point twelve percent were by mail ballots. There were one hundred and, oh, excuse me, two hundred and forty-five ballots that were not counted and unfortunately, one hundred and fifty-five of those had a postmark that was invalid. So those are the folks that did take time to fill out their ballots, but did not get them submitted in timely, timely manner. The county sent out two hundred and forty-two, what, what they call is cure letters, which is a letter to the voter letting them know something's wrong with their ballot, their signature doesn't match the previous signature, there's some problem. They're required to notify those voters within, I believe, twenty-four hours. And of those two hundred and forty-two voters, unfortunately, sixty-two percent of those folks did not return their corrected ballots. I can go on and on, but I know we have a lot of, of information to cover tonight, so just know that all of this information is now on our website as well as the Salt Lake County Clerk's website and it gets down to some significant detail as far as turnout for individual precincts. And I'm available for any questions that the board may have.
Councilmember Whitlock?
I don't have a question, Jamie, but I want to thank you for your work on this election, for all the time you've put in. Thank you for your thoroughness.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. And Jamie, I want to say the same thing. You've done an excellent job with this election and I just want to thank you.
Thank you very much.
By the way, I have, sorry, I apologize. I have a buddy out there, Tanji Sloan was with me every step of the way and, and there were a lot of us working on this, so thank you.
Someone on the board like to make a motion? Councilmember Anderson?
I'll move to approve the canvas of the two thousand nineteen City of West Jordan Municipal General Election on November fifth, twenty nineteen.
I'll second it.
A motion, a motion by Board Member Anderson and a second by Board Member Whitlock. Discussion to the motion. Board Member Anderson?
I just want to say congratulations to the candidates that won. Councilmember Dirk Burton as mayor-elect, congratulations. And Kelvin Green as councilmember-elect-at-large and Melissa Werthen, council-elect District Two for being here tonight. And I know several of you will remain up here, Councilmember McConaughey and Councilmember Lamb, Councilmember Whitlock and Councilmember Jacob. And I just applaud the nineteen people that put their hats in the race and my, the count I remember is six. We elected six out of those nineteen people to represent our, our city for at least the next two years. And what an honor it has been to be up here these last three years to serve with each of you. This has been an amazing council and I'm sorry to see it go. I don't think I'll be too far. I think I'll be down there for a little bit till, till it wears off. Or maybe it won't wear off, but it's been a pleasure to work with all of you and also with the staff, with Rob Wall, David Bricky, Corbin Lee on the administration side. And I wa- I felt like this was the time for me to, to thank all of them and, and welcome the new councilmember-elect, so thank you.
Rob Wall?
Thank you, Mayor. I may have missed this, but if I did, I'm sorry. If not, could we just have it clear on the record that it was entirely appropriate to approve the canvas, but note that it is approving Resolution nineteen dash two hundred?
Yeah, I don't think, I'm going to make a motion here. The motion's been made. And seconded.
Yeah, so it's nineteen two hundred, if you'll add that to my-
amended motion?
Yeah, I was reading up top. Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, let's vote.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Business item, excuse me, nine B, tabled from November thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Discussion and possible action regarding adoption of Ordinance nineteen dash thirty-three, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code thirteen dash eight dash twenty-three B exemptions to include properties located in the interchange overlay zone, IOZ, citywide applicability, City of West Jordan applicant Larry Gardner.
Again, I think this was discussed in length last council meeting. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the council to staff? Seeing none, then we'll just allow question, we'll allow discussion by council members. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, because I don't have a question, but I wanted to thank Larry for taking time to meet with me and, and help review this since our last meeting so I could be more informed on what I'm going to do and I almost know what I'm going to do.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate what I mentioned last week when we discussed this and that is with this whole interchange overlay zone and all of these pieces that belong to it, including this one, we're not automatically granting anything. Each individual application still needs to come to the council, still needs to be approved. Each individual development agreement, development plan will still need to come, still need to be approved. So even if we put in this exception to the cabin grade, which I think is wholly appropriate for, for this because it's, it's sending the message not only to developers who want to develop in these zones, but developers who want to develop elsewhere in the city that, look, we have a place designated for your density. We have a place designated for your car dealership. We have a place designated for your intense industrial uses. We have these places designated, so when you come to me and you say, we want to put in density, you know, out here on the fringe of somewhere or, you know, just on the outskirts of Harriman or, 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 or maybe like in the middle of this single-family neighborhood where it doesn't make sense under a form-based zone, we have the tool to say, look, no, we have a place for this. It's, it's, we've identified that, look, interchanges, freeways, highly-traveled arterial streets, this is where stuff like this belongs. So for that reason, that it, that it sends that message, but also the, the council still has full authority to approve or deny future development agreements. I, I think this is a, this is a positive step. It's, it's what needs to happen and I'll just leave it at that for now, thanks.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. My, my comments are directed to you, Councilman Jacob. So thank you for that explanation. I think that was very good. My concern, and maybe you could help me with that as well, is let's suppose somebody comes in and they, we give them the opportunity to do that density there in the area we say and then we have other parts, because we're mixing uses here, other parts is maybe industrial or maybe commercial or whatever it happens to be. And ten years, twenty years later, they come back and they say, we are unable to put this commercial in this area. We have just tried and it's just not going to happen. And since this is under this density area, how about if we just expand the residential part over this area now? Because you've already approved it here and it just fits in right there and it's right next to what is over there. Let's just do that now. How do we account for that?
I'll just assume I have the floor again. Thank you for the question and it's, it's purely hypothetical because that would never happen in real life. My, my point with that is in ten or twenty years, we can't bind a future council anyway. They could come and request a code change to, to allow it. And if that future council's going to allow it, that future council's going to allow it. And if that's the way they want to do it, that's the way they want to do it. But this sends a, a good proactive message, I think. It's something that this council's been really bad at, not this council, this city in general and a little bit this council. We've been really good at reacting, we've been very bad at proacting and I think this sends a really good, positive, look, these aren't freeways yet. Bangator's almost there, at least our, our section's a freeway. Mountain View's not a freeway yet, but it's going to be. Someday we may want to glance at this again when we get an update from UDOT on what their plans are for U-111 because I think that's changed with the, with the plans for Mountain View. It's taken a little bit of the pressure off turning that into a freeway, so, or into higher capacity. So as these steps fall in place, obviously this will need to be tweaked and amended and, and, and reexamined going forward as our whole code does all the time. So I, I hope that answers your question a little bit.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe Councilmember Burton, this, this may be helpful. Last week when we voted on the, on the zones, I was, sitting here, I was the third vote that, that Jamie called. I was the third name on, on the vote. And up until that point, I was unsure how I was going to vote because I did have some concerns that I relayed about the seventy-five acres and had one sentence that I think causes some concern for me while I sit up here, that I, I wanted to limit it to plans that had already been adopted. But as I was the third vote and I heard the first two votes go in, I had a flood of thought come into my mind. And that flood of thought was, number one, we're controlling where we're going to put any kind of density. We now have an opportunity to work with a developer to say, what you're wanting to do is going to be in this interchange overlay, not where you think you want to put it. The other aspect, as you know, I, I do a lot with water and I have, I think we all have some concerns on how we're going to get water to the west side of the city, more water. We already have some water, but we're going to need more water. I talked to a, a member of our economic development team just today coming into the building for a city council meeting and, and there's things that we can do within District Four that are commercial, non-housing, but we have to get water to make those happen. And so I get concerned, as Councilmember Whitlock mentioned, so this, this is all happening during the, the roll call vote. These floods came, a flood of thought came into me about, we're now controlling where we can put density. We're now controlling where we have some access to the infrastructure that maybe be more supportive of the infrastructure we have in place rather than trying to invest large infrastructure further out west. So when, when those flood of thoughts came to me, I decided to vote yes on the interchange overlay zone. What landowners do with their land is very difficult for any city council to control and I've, earlier this meeting, I used that we are the, I can't remember, it's a, it's a, we're like the guardrails on the road and we can help shape and control. But even, even up here on the dais, I have reluctantly approved zones where a developer said at that microphone, we've been trying for twenty years to put in commercial and nobody's biting, so we're here with forty homes or thirty homes. And there's one that I voted no on that's in District Four that's in my neighborhood, just about a three-quarters of a mile from my house, that I voted no. And if you remember, I had asked them to change where their ingress egress was to make it in the neighborhood versus Forty-Eighth West because I felt that that flowed better and that was not, that was not included and so I, I voted no. I wasn't here when that was originally zoned as commercial. So for me, I, I will admit, I don't, I don't know that it's perfect, but I don't know that we've passed anything that's been perfect. We always seem to revisit things and, and clarify them. To me, I think the internet overlay zone, interchange overlay zone, I don't know where that word came from. Yeah, AWOL. You've got mail. I, I think this is a footprint of where we can take the- I, I think this is a footprint of where we can take the city in being proactive and not so much reactive. I do anticipate that the future council will probably address some things that are, are, would be in the interchange overlay zone. But, but those, those are my thoughts, and that's how I came to the conclusion last week to, to make that vote, was just a flood of thought came into me about, how do we protect the infrastructure? How do we control where housing's going to go? I do think legislatively, this will be something that you will be able to use this coming legislative session to kind of defend West Jordan on what we are doing to create housing and density. And I know Councilmember Whitlock had talked to me about my feelings last week on the, on the interchange overlay, and I've, I've talked to her and, and explained. I had these flood of thoughts, and that's, that's what I, that's how I made my, my vote last week. And so, sorry, I've rambled too long, but thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions for Larry. Larry, a couple of questions. Just quick background behind these. With a prior city attorney, we were told that when developers came to request a change in zoning, it was presumed that they should be given that unless the city could prove where they did not meet certain criteria. So the questions that I have are, number one, is this creating any sort of entitlement for, for development? And number two, could you describe the process that's required before somebody can get approval to develop something that has significant density that would exceed the, the current cap and grade?
So what, what process are you speaking of?
So, so the first question is as to whether or not we're granting or instantly vesting any rights. My understanding, as I read this, is they can request it, but it has to go through, I think it's design review, planning commission, city council.
Okay, I follow what you're, I was confused as I often. So passing of an ordinance entitles no one to anything. That ordinance can set on the books and never be used. Every, and you're correct, every time that somebody wants to make a change to the, to the zoning map, which would be an overlay, they would go through the process outlined in the ordinance. They would, they would go to the planning commission and the city council, but with that, they'd have to create a development plan and a development agreement. But the zone, the ordinance itself does not entitle it to anyone. So that's still your decision, and that's down the road.
So with it being an overlay, it's, it's a tool that exists, but not necessarily one that's instantly deployed. We're just adding something to the toolbox. We're not putting a blade on the saw, firing up the saw, walking away from it. It's just, it's all we could potentially do.
Exactly.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor. I asked Scott to pull up the map for us, so to kind of give us an idea for those who weren't in on the discussion last time. Really, with the, with the overlay zone, I, last week, both I and Councilmember Whitlock were the negative votes, and I don't think it was ever that we were against it. It was that we wanted to talk about it some more. I've had a week to look at it. I've had a week to look over it. And I'll kind of go back to what I reiterated before. Really, where we're putting these inner, these overlay zones at, most of the areas are already kind of planned. You look at up here, the, if you go on, on the Seventy-Eighth, the lower portion, kind of where you got the cursor, they're already building there. It's already planned. You go to the west side, it's already building, it's already planned. So really, when we talk about these overlay zone and the changing of what's going to happen, it's going to be everything that's north of Seventy-Eighth South, whether it's on the west side or on the east side. And Krikenfroong, Ramong side, isn't, isn't most of the east side kind of planned as well?
Yes, that's under the, the copper rim development plan.
So if we change this and, and allow this, you know, kind of to, kind of go over the cap and grade, I think those two areas are going to be the main areas we're going to be looking at making changes. My hope is that if we make a yes vote tonight, is that it doesn't change what we've got on Ninety. Because on Ninety, I know that the city owns three corners of Ninety, correct? So three of those corners, we have two of them, okay. So once again, our worry is, you know, where, where is that going to happen? And, and for those who have not been on the city council before, the first thing that people tell you is there's too many apartments, there's too much high density. I, I've heard it for two years, and I heard it before as well. You know, I drive through Midvale when I go home every day. And if you don't, if you haven't driven through Midvale and Seventy-Eighth, they are building castles of apartments over there. And they just keep going up and up and up. And I'm sure our police chief isn't a big fan of that many at once, at all. I, I think when, I think when the colossals were building their apartment complex there, I called the Midvale area an ant farm, because they were building so many apartments out there. That's what I don't want to have happen here. When I drove to Provo last week, we drove along Red River Road, Harriman is just an ant farm with apartments. Lehigh, ant farm of apartments. That's what I'm hoping to avoid by making this vote tonight, is I am not against all high density, I'm just against a lot of it. And that's what I want to, and, and I'm hoping that as a council, that we can work with the developers, because the, the developers want to develop. We want them to develop. But sometimes, we don't see eye to eye. So I'm hoping that as we make these decisions tonight, that we can take this zoning and make it a win-win for both of us. Make it so that the developers kind of get what they want, and that we kind of get what we want, and then give and take, so that we can all make it work together. Because the last thing I want to have happen in two years, and this is, this is the most interesting case of being on the council, is people will talk to me about apartments being built right now on the west side, and I had nothing to do with it. They were, they were planned, what, six years ago? Yeah. So, so there's still some being built that were planned six years ago. So, so right now, if we make this decision, you know, it's probably going to be six more years until these are built. So as we make this decision, and I, me personally, I just want to look at, yes, I'm not against high density, I'm just against a lot of it. And that will probably be what drives my vote tonight as we make this change. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitlock?
So as Councilmember Lamb pointed out, I did vote no last week, because I felt like, and I still feel like, good legislation is not pass saying, yeah, there's issues, but we're going to pass it anyway. And one of the issues I had with it is that it was fifty acres and not seventy-five, which is what came through at one time. And I think seventy-five is better. I think that if we're going to allow exceptions, we need to, the citizens in our city deserve to get something back. I agree that by interchanges, it's a really good place for commercial and a better place for high density. I worry about the amount of high density being built. I don't believe the narrative that is being given. I don't believe that there are that many people that want to live in apartment buildings, condos. I think most people want to own their own little home with a little bit of property. Some people, a little bit of property is, you know, less than a quarter acre. Some people, a little bit of property is a couple acres. But I think they want some property, so I struggle with that. But it would, my vote last meeting was more because that ordinance needed some work, and we weren't willing to do that. And that makes me sad, because there's no rush. There, there should never be a rush to get something right. The house wasn't burning down, then there should be a rush. So tonight, I, I will, unless, unless I'm convinced otherwise, I will probably be voting yes, because this is just putting it in what's already been approved. So it's already been approved, and I do think that, that there is a need for some high density. I don't equate high density with affordable, and I think that's really where this council and the future council needs to look at the affordable part. And maybe, maybe we need to do things to incentivize our, our developers to, to include an element of affordability in, in their properties.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comment about the seventy-five acres versus fifty acres. One of the problems that spurred the, the cap and grade originally was there were a number of developers that were trying to put high-density multifamily on rather small parcels, like to the tune of, say, eleven point four acres. I'll be specific. But fifty or seventy-five, I could be in favor of either one. The idea being that as long as it's a larger development, I think with fifty acres, we can get a pretty good mix and work with the developer to, to create a product that is beneficial for West Jordan and them as well. Seventy-five acres, I mean, you're increasing the canvas by fifty percent of that, and, and I think there's a lot more opportunities. Last time around, I, I suggested that it might be, might be beneficial to be somewhat cautious in the areas that we selected for those intersection overlays, and kept it right at Mountain View Corridor as we started. I, kind of going along with that, I would suggest maybe we started the seventy-five acres as well. And then as we look at how things play out over here, and figure out, okay, how can this be applied to U-111 as that's going out, or do we want to apply this to infill along Bangator, then we can look at trimming it down a little bit. But I think it's probably, probably not a bad idea to have that larger acreage requirement to start with, because it's so much easier to reduce the requirements rather than expand them as things go on. So I would, I would be in, in support of passing this with, with the, with the fifty, or if, with the seventy-five, if somebody wanted to make that change. Thank you, Mayor.
No further discussion? Someone like to make a motion? Or I will. I move to adopt ordinance nineteen dash thirty-three. Councilmember Jacob?
I'll second.
A motion by Mayor Riding and council by, uh, second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the members of the public who have spoken to me about this and given me information. And I want to thank the staff for talking with me and answering my questions and working this out with me, and also my esteemed colleagues for helping me understand and share their ideas and thoughts with me. I will be voting in favor.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Back to analogies. I feel like a boy scout who just got his first pocket knife at age eight. We have a nice new tool, but we do have the potential to cut off our thumb with this. It gives the council and the planning commission additional capabilities and additional options, but we have to use additional judgment, do a little bit of additional homework to make sure that we don't injure ourselves with this. I think there's some good benefits that could be possible, but if it's, if left unchecked, it, it could also be dangerous, what we're, what we're just about to vote on. But I, I'm hoping we'll, future councils will, will be cautious. Staff will provide the guidelines necessary, and hopefully, the developers will partner with us in good faith to create a product that's beneficial to everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
And Mayor Riding?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All in favor of a short break before we start our workshop? Any opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, short break. Council meeting workshop. Okay, we're moving on to workshop item 10A. Discussion regarding the 2009 West Jordan Municipal Code Title III, Chapters 3-9 Inclusive Revenue Finance and Taxation Regarding the Change of the Council-Mayor Form of Government, Duncan Murray.
Little, yeah.
So Mayor, did you just call Title III?
I just called Title III, correct.
So Title III.
Title III, as we went through it with key staff over the last week, there are still some major provisions that we're working on. I'd request that we table this one until the workshop at your next meeting on December 4th. I guess you don't really need an official table motion because it's a workshop, but if you're okay passing it by.
Yeah, because this is a workshop, we can just move it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Do you, but can, may I ask, do you want some of our input now, though?
It's gonna s-
Or are you gonna do it later?
Yeah, I, I'd recommend we do it later because it's gonna change substantially.
Then I need another paper cu- copy of your change.
Yeah.
No, I don't need another one.
Okay, so you want to move to Title IV then?
Yes, Mayor. So if we're looking at Title IV, I did send you an email earlier today. It's what's being projected up on the screen. There's a few last changes that were made over the last few days with key staff that are in green. So you can either follow along on the, uh, I, I know Councilmember Whitelock has a printed copy, some of you have it by email, and then again, we have it up on the screen. And I guess, Denise, you're gonna be kind of scrolling it for me? Yeah, so what I would recommend is unless, unless you have other potential changes, that we just go to the yellow highlighted and green highlighted areas, the green being the most recent. If we scroll to the, like, the third page, and again, this is business license regulations. This whole title, and we're just looking primarily at those issues that are either change of form of government related, or there's some kind of formatting related. But if you look at the first green there, you're gonna see that in a few places that we noticed with some of these types of official documents, whether they're BCI background checks or whatever, that sometimes they'll call it an original, sometimes they'll call it a certified copy. So we just changed the language to say original or certified copy. So that's just more of a, I mean, it's not formatting or change of government related, it's more just accurate, uh, description. So if there's no issue there, the, the next definition going on to Business License Authority in yellow there. Couple of these changes throughout where we just went from city manager to city administrator. And then you'll notice in green, the certificate as Brock, uh, who as part of his department oversees business licensing, indicated that we no longer use certificates. We haven't used them for years, so we're just deleting a term that we no longer use, that's no longer applicable.
Do, do we still have city solicitors or a city solicitor's license of some kind?
Yes.
Okay, and that's elsewhere?
Door-to-door salesman, yeah.
Okay, and that's elsewhere, uh?
But it's elsewhere, right. Yeah, there's a different process other than using a certificate for a solicitor's license now. So we still have them, but different procedure. Then the next one is just the definition of city manager now changing to, uh, city administrator. And of course, that's defined more specifically elsewhere in the code in Title I that you've already approved. And then as you scroll down to the completed application definition, again, it's just that same, uh, language, original or certified.
May, may I ask a question? A, a fully completed application form, an original or certified copy. I assume the fully completed application form could, could include a web-based application form if someone wanted to renew their license? I think it would be really good if we could tie into what the state does with their one-stop shop, where you can go to the State Department of Commerce website and register your business name, and they will take you, if your website, city website allows it, they will take you right to the city website, you can finish, and all of that stuff is imported. So we have, uh, sales tax numbers, all the, all the numbers that we would, that they've, are assigned by the state, automatically come over to the, to the city.
Yeah, and I'd have to, yeah.
Right, right, but I'm just saying a fully completed application would be, could include a web.
Yeah, it could be web-based, it could be paper, and I know Brock's probably looking at all of those, all those options. So Brock, I'm sure can make a note of that. Any changes or any questions on any of these changes so far? Okay, so then we can go on to the exempt definition, we can scroll down to that, exempt rental dwelling unit. This was an older definition that, uh, we're no longer using. That's correct, right? So again, it's just to kind of bring up to date with current practice of what we're actually doing right now, or what we have been doing for a while. And then as we scroll through, a little further, we get to the definition for number of employees. So also the current practice is that there's no, uh, when we're looking at businesses, we don't look at, our staff doesn't look at full-time versus part-time. It's just total number of employees, whatever amount of time that they're spending. So there was no need to, uh, have that second sentence. So that was another kind of a change in practice over time to make it current with what we're doing. And then owner occupied, um, same thing, we're not, uh, our owner occupied definition pretty much is just as an owner in that unit or not. Previously, I guess sometime in the past, if I understand correctly, we allowed if, if there was a multiple unit dwelling and some, an owner lived in one of the units, and the others were not, that we would count that as owner occupied, but that's no longer the case, right?
So Duncan, Duncan, does that mean, does that mean that, um, each individual unit in a four-plex is just considered separately, so one would be owner occupied?
And three would not be, right.
Instead of the building as a whole?
Exactly.
Being owner occupied.
Each unit is, is separately determined to be owner occupied or not.
And this is in, in the business license section, so this is pertaining to things like rental dwelling fees and?
Exactly.
Gotcha, yada, yada, yada.
So this brings us up to practice that we've had for the last few years, to make it match. So then the next one, uh, public dance, uh, that one is just again, a change of title, city manager to city administrator. And here's where we do have the registered solicitor definition we were talking about. And instead of, like you were mentioning, uh, Zach, that instead of it being a certificate now, it's a solicitor's license is what a door-to-door registered solicitor has, so. And then as we go down to, uh, self-service display, uh, that definition. Remind me, Brock, this is a definition that's new, that we previously did not have in our code, but that we need because of the-
It is in the tobacco code for the state.
Tobacco, right.
We didn't have it in ours, so it's best if, since we are basically going with the state code for tobacco and tobacco specialty stores, it's best if we have the same definitions that they do.
Or pretty much lifting it out of state law. So you'll notice that there's a few changes in here that relate to that same theme of either vaping or tobacco product, mainly tobacco product type changes where there's been recent changes in state law. So that's a critical definition. Then we get to the definition of soliciting, solicitation, which of course is like door-to-door sales, that kind of thing. And we had kind of a, this one's more of a First Amendment cleanup problem. But we had subsection, yeah, subsection, I guess, E, where it had seeking to engage, uh, in conversation for the, regarding religious belief, political position, that kind of thing. And so, uh, recommending that we strike, that's part of the definition.
Hasn't that been decided, like, in court issues and things like that? I remember doing a considerable amount of research on that when campaigning, you know? And I was just dropping off a, a flyer in a door jam most of the time, and I had one person say, "Aren't you soliciting?" Or doesn't no soliciting mean no soliciting? And I said, "Well, that's why I didn't knock on your door," even though that would have been okay. But I was trying to cro- try to find line with people, so. I was, just good ideas.
No, that's, that's right. In fact, there's a couple of Supreme Court cases now that have distinguished political solicitation and charitable solicitation and religious solicitation from all other types of solicitation. And it's interesting that they have weighed on the side of the solicitor rather than the property owner. So you're spot on.
Exactly. And then right below it, uh, there is the definition of solicitor or solicitors. And again, uh, where we do a license now, instead of a certificate, we're dropping the term certificate from that definition. So we could probably now scroll that all the way. I think there's no other, oh yeah, we get to the tobacco specialty business definition, which is really the most important one out of these definitions to come into compliance with state law. So we had a lot of these different provisions in here, um, that we removed and are proposing replacing with, if you look at the top of the next page, the rest of the definition, we, we just have the clause C Utah Code Annotated Sections Such-and-Such and Related in Successor Provisions. They're constantly being amended and renumbered, and so if we just put related in successor provisions, but basically those contain all of the, uh, key statutory, uh, sections that deal with the whole tobacco specialty business. And, and where it would, we'd have to constantly amend this definition, it's just easier to do it this way and just refer to those sections, so. But this is one of the, the biggest areas in which the Community Preservation Department is, is focused. It's a, it's a need clear, a clear-cut definition, so. Any questions on that one? Just citing state law. Okay, so that's it for the definitions, and now we can probably scroll down to, I guess it's 41B4. You're gonna see this a couple of times where it's in green. We're gradually working our way, yeah, just scroll down a little bit more to get to the 41B-4, its powers of business license authority. There's a couple of areas where we're citing the new Title 16, which is the Administrative Law Judge Program. And, uh, it used to be codified in Title I of our code, now it's in Title, in Title 16. So we're just updating the, the current reference for the ALJ and code enforcement provisions where they're currently codified. And then as we scroll down to that next one, um, here we're just dealing now with the division that's actually, uh, working with these issues. Instead of it being the police department in the past, it's our code enforcement division. We still have the general clause there, or other investigative organization, just in case there is a change in name or a different department assisting, but it is primarily our code enforcement division now instead of our police department performing that function. And then if you scroll down to 41B6, this is kind of an interesting issue here. I mean, it's the whole issue of, we had in our ordinance that, uh, this provision about no transfer of entity ownership. I don't know that it makes a lot of sense for us to dictate whether a business owns a certain percentage or, or whatever. Uh, it's the recommendation of, of key staff that we just delete this provision. Did I miss anything on that, Brock?
Thanks, key staff.
I called Brock key staff. There might be other key staff besides him. All right. And then if we, uh, if we scroll down to 41B12, this is the, the classic shall versus may. Of course, shall is mandatory, may is discretionary. And, uh, may seems to be a better fit for both of these terms right here.
I, I have a question on that. Does this allow a discretionary time when somebody may not issue a license? Providing all the, even if all the fees are paid and legal requirements are met, it says they may issue a license, it doesn't say they shall.
Right.
So provided you meet all the licenses, the Business License Authority could just still just say, "Nah, nah, not for you."
Well.
"We don't like hot tubs here, we're gonna-"
I mean, obviously if they meet all the criteria, it's, it's a, it's akin to like, uh, a land use decision where if they meet all the criteria, you, you have to approve it. But there are little nuances that come up with business license issuance where sometimes there's, uh, a reason why you may not want shall because there might be something that comes up that's not on your regular list of, of criteria, so.
Yeah, that one gives me just a little bit of heartburn.
Would, would it be better to, and I, I'm, I'm just doing this on the fly, but, uh, the Business License Authority, comma, provided all fees are paid and legal requirements met, shall issue the license, or, well, I'm just wondering if there's some wordsmithing that may make it easier, because how I'm reading this is I may, the Business License Authority can issue the license as long as the fees are paid and legal requirements met, but we, city may deny the license if the legal requirements are not met, but it's not saying that if the fees aren't paid, I mean, it's.
So it wasn't long ago, there was, I want to say like a doctor or something like that off of, like, 90th and Redwood, where there were interesting things going on, where the city had to suspend the license or something. I can't remember, it was a really odd scenario. So, I don't, I don't know, in this case, rather than binding the city and saying, "They'll shall go provide a license," I'm okay leaving a little bit of leeway in case something really weird, really strange comes up. Shall is, shall means shall, and sometimes we don't want shall.
The reason for this is if we get into another situation like we have recently with an unnamed pawn shop, if that owner does not get charged, or do we not, if we choose not to issue a new bus- business license for something of that scenario, it, it allows us the opportunity to say, "You know what, this didn't go right last time, so we're gonna rethink it this time."
Maybe we want a little bit of a waiting period, should we be waiting for a legal opinion or a judge to decide something rather than having to wait two years for it to play out in court? Potentially gives us another avenue.
Yeah, to me, it, I would want there to be a legal basis for that, though. Like, like we have a defensible position that we can take, that would be a legal requirement. And here, a legal requirement was not met, therefore you shall not issue the license because a legal requirement was not met. Otherwise, it could be perceived as arbitrary. So I just wonder if there's an arbitrary and capricious argument that could be made here that kind of leaves us in a, I mean, a, a number.
I'm, I'm just thinking if there's a business that's been, I, I don't want to say known to engage in practices that are not, um, legal or ethical, it just hasn't yet, they just haven't yet had their chance to prove it in court. Or you get, I, the one with the doctor, the doctor was taking advantage of folks. Do you want to allow them to continue doing that and require city staff to issue a license? Or do you want to have an, an option to protect the citizen, should it be necessary? I don't know how you would write-
Are they doing something that's illegal? Or if they're doing something that's illegal, we can have a legal requirement being you're not doing something that's illegal.
Then they could turn around and say, "Well, you haven't proven in a court of law that what I'm just doing, doing is illegal." It's gonna take us two years to get to that point, so let me continue doing it for two more years.
We do have a presumption of innocence, though, in the country, and that's the kind of foundation.
They, they, they do, but in the case that I'm thinking, the evidence was overwhelming.
Again, though, it's gotta be proven in court. Again, though, it's gotta be proven in court.
So do we want to require the city to continue to issue licenses to let them continue what they're doing until they've seen everything through? Or do we want to have the ability to say, you know what, maybe we need to have a little bit of wiggle room so we can administratively put a hold on this?
Who, who decides that the evidence is overwhelming, though? And what if they're found not guilty and we denied them a license for two years?
I mean, the other way you could handle it is you could keep both of those shall, but just add a clause at the end unless a, another legal process is used.
Well, I would just say it says all legal requirements.
Yeah, but someone.
One of those legal requirements be there's not a pending lawsuit, you're not accused of, of a crime, blah, blah, blah. Some, something in those legal requirements, then you can keep it as the city will or will not based on the requirements given, not may or may not based on the requirements given. Because again, that, that just, to me, that leaves a, an arbitrary component, but I'm, again, I'm just one, though.
So maybe we could add after legal requirements, legal requirements or processes, which would allow for a pending lawsuit or anything else.
Yeah, I'll leave that to you, key staff, to figure out how to phrase that. But I just, I just don't like having an arbitrary loophole written into the code. I think that's.
Is everybody okay with me changing it back to shall but just adding the words or processes after requirements? So it would read now, provided all fees are paid and legal requirements and processes are met.
No, leaving shall back in and leaving out the may. But I think, I think legal processes would need to be defined.
We'll work on the language a little bit, but we'll include something to allow, to encompass, to allow the, the city to do an injunction or if there's a pending lawsuit or anything else.
Yeah, I think we could file an injunction or a stay or something like that and have a judge rule on the preponderance of.
We'll work on that language then to, so you're okay if we change it back to shall, work on the language, bring it back to the next meeting to include those kinds of things?
That's what I would like.
Okay.
I, I, I shall agree with you. I mean, I may approve that if you break, nevermind.
So what basis, what basis does the city have? Going with Councilmember McConaughey's comment on if a doc, this, this doctor that he talked about was doing something, the city issues a license, the city is giving the business an okay to operate a business in the city. I don't know. I mean, I understand what Councilmember Jacob is saying, but I, there's, there should be a provision without having to go through an entire court thing of doing something illegal to where.
It's only illegal if you're found guilty.
Correct, correct. But, but could you be doing something that's not necessarily illegal but against the code? Or gets, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Yes, but then it'd be under their licensing, so Doppel would come in and do it. Because they're breaking the rules that Doppel has set up and that's where the ethics.
Doppel doesn't take people to court.
Yes, they do.
They, they can, but not everyone that they pull has, has gone to court and proven guilty.
That's right, but they, Doppel can take your license away without having to go to court first.
Right, so why can't we take a license away and not have to go to court?
We have to have established parameters like Doppel does.
So how do we make this fit those parameters?
Or is that a conversation we want tonight or do we want to more in line with change of form of government?
I think we should have a workshop on it, nevermind.
No, we can work on the language. We'll, we'll find something that includes all of those things that you're talking about.
I, I think the city, I mean, I'm fine with the wording as long as the city has the ability without having to go to court to say, this isn't working and we're, we're pulling it until you come into compliance. Your mic's not on, Mike.
Like if they don't pay their fee, you don't take them to court, you just don't issue the license.
Correct.
So anything we list in there, I think we could do that with.
That's where I think the legal requirements have to be met. And we just spell out what the legal requirements are. And that can change policy by policy by policy. We can change what the legal requirements are in the business license department whenever, without having to change the code per se, we change the requirement, so.
And just change policy. All right, so the next one's four, one B seventeen. And here I think this one also just brings us in line with current practice, right, Brock, on this one?
Well, you're right next to me now.
Correct. We don't do prorational licenses, they're twelve month licenses.
They're just always twelve months, right? We don't do part of a year, we always do a full year.
She was doing something else.
And then, so then if we scroll down to four, one B thirty-one, that was just a bunch of several changes, city manager to city administrator, who now is the licensing authority. And then I'm sure there's a change for a little while till you get to four, one C five. So now you're gonna see through these sections, there's, there's some changes. Well, first of all, you had four, one C three, that's just another one of those. We used to have code enforcement and ALJ provisions in Title one, now they're in sixteen. We're just reflecting the, the change to where they're codified. But the license denial appeal board in the past has been the city manager, but since the increased usage of the administrative law judge program, that's been gradually shifting. So in a sense, this is partially to bring us in line with current practice and where we want to go in the future. And so it's, that's why that's there. The, the advantage to having this particular section, four, one C five, is that if the council in the future wanted to change it so that it's some other person or group of people that's the appeal board, you don't have to go through code in fifty-six different places and change the name. You can just change it in this one section and say everywhere where the business or the license denial appeal board is listed, that doesn't mean administrative law judge. Now it means board adjustment or it means whoever. So that's, that's what that is there.
Is there an appeal for the administrative law judges ruling? Is there an appeal?
District court.
It's district court.
Yeah, everything from him goes directly to, at that point, they've exhausted our administrative remedies and go to district.
I'm sure administrative law judge would be exhausted at that point.
And he, the, as a side note, this room is used for the administrative law judge holds hearings here. They are, there are scheduled dates every other Friday. Most, but not all those dates are used, right? Some of those hearings that he's had have been on businesses, right? And it's been a very successful program, so.
What time are those here? Are they always at the same time of day or?
We start at nine AM. We've got a list, he has to give us a, in his contract, it provides for one year worth of dates ahead of time. With the holidays, those kind of mix up, kind of like council meeting did two weeks in a row. Usually it's every other, twice a month, nine AM.
But it's not fixed dates, like it's not every first and third Friday. It might be first and second, one month, the second and fourth, the next.
Right.
But it's always two Fridays a month. Then if you go on to four, one C seven, as we've been doing these changes in the new form of government, we don't have a city clerk dash recorder. We have a city recorder, so we drop the reference to, to clerk.
No longer, we'll have a city clerk at all, right? Is that correct?
Right, now you may end up having a, a council clerk if you want, if, if that's what you want to call the person that's taking the minutes, or it could be a part of somebody else's job, but.
Okay.
Council administrator.
Well, I mean, you have your council office director, right? But if you had, say, a, a part-time person that that's all they do is do the minutes, they could, that's a title that a lot of people use as clerk. So right now, that's a function of the city recorder, but the, the Title one changes that you already went through and approved. Most, probably eighty-five, ninety percent of what the city clerk recorder is currently doing, the city recorder will do in the future. One of the main functions that the city recorder will not do in the new form of government is take the minutes. Now, once the minutes are approved and they become a record, that becomes the city recorder's responsibility the way your code is, is being changed, so. Okay.
Thank you. Do we have to approve the minutes or just accept the minutes?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you can just accept them, it's whatever your rules say.
If you accept them, they're considered approved, but the minutes are not the official record until the seven of you vote that it is the official record. And whether you say accept them or approve them, do what you feel comfortable doing, but that action has to occur or they're not the minutes yet. You can actually go back and change the language that is presented to you by the, by the secretary or clerk and then approve them or accept them.
Okay.
I accept and approve that.
So I guess the operative term is vote on them, maybe, yeah. So then four, one D one is where we go to next. And so this is more on the enforcement area again. And, and of course nowadays, the code enforcement officers are the primary mechanism for enforcement. So we're just adding tho, that official title in. That's the, what we call them in Title sixteen in the code already. So just adding that, that terminology. And then four, one D two is our penalties. Of course, anything administrative in the future will be by the mayor instead of the council. And then the one thousand dollars instead of five hundred dollars, I think that's because of state code, right? They've made that change, so we're just trying to be consistent with state code.
I think I brought this up before, but it'd be nice, just like we have a fee schedule, to have a fine schedule to show what all the different options are. So it's all there on one page and then just like a little asterisk next to each saying this is designated by, or per state code, just, just so that these things get regular review.
Regular, regular?
Say that ten times fast.
Yeah, that. So we review them at a semi-frequent basis because I think we've run into some of these that hadn't been updated for like twenty years. So having, having a consolidated fine schedule to go along with the fee schedule, I think would be nice.
And that's probably something for city manager and assistant city manager to kind of, kind of look at. But you're okay, at least for these dollar amounts, being in the code for now until such time as we have some kind of consolidated fine schedule? Okay, and then in subsection B, then again, that's another just updating, it's in chap, in Title sixteen now. And then if you scroll over to the next bit of yellow, which I think is, yeah, four, two, A two, whatever. Couple of changes from council to, to mayor. And these are just special, single event permits that the mayor would, would issue now. And obviously, one of the reasons why it makes more sense, not just with the change of government where it's administrative for the mayor to do it, but a lot of these single events are, come up in a way that maybe you don't have a council meeting in time to be able to, be able to approve it, so.
I thought we had already changed a lot of those, like fireworks were already changed over to the fire marshal.
Right, similar kind of thing.
I thought like some of these, I thought the alcohol for a single event was already delegated to the city administrator or city manager because we were no longer hearing when the folks on Third Street have their annual thing. I mean, they're still doing the party, but city council's not doing it. I, I thought that was already going that way.
Yeah, so this might be.
No, like St. Joseph's Worker when they do their September, October thing.
We haven't had those on consent calendars in a long time.
Right, so this is more maybe bringing it in line with current practice anyway than to have.
They do a local consent that has to go through business licensing to myself, to the city manager. The DABC requires that, so it doesn't come to you?
I did not know local consent, so thank you.
Okay. All right, and then four, two, A four then. Operational restrictions, this is just changing the word drunk to intoxicated, which is the, the legal term that we use nowadays.
Is there a difference between that and inebriated?
Well, intoxicated implies a, a legal standard or whatever. Inebriated is not as succinct or accurate, so. Yeah, harder to say, especially if you're inebriated.
I'm not drunk, I just took a lot of pills. Wait, what?
Or Councilmember H, I mean.
So then we have four, two, A six, and, and that's just another city manager to administrator. And then four, two, A ten. So most of the way through here, the appeal authority, we've talked about is the administrative law judge, who we refer to him throughout here as the denial appeal board. But there is this set of provisions here in four, two, A ten that's a little different. It's not so much a regular appeal as it is kind of a, a variance from the ordinance. And since you're gonna see titles twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen come in with some changes that are similar to this from a land use perspective rather than a, a business license perspective. But of course, the land use appeal authority, or we call that land use appeal authority a board of adjustment typically handles any time there's a variation from the ordinance. You know, somebody needs eighty feet of frontage and they only have seventy-nine and they come in for a variance or whatever. This is similar, but it's not land use, this is business licensing. But it kind of makes sense to use the board of adjustment. The, the other option is you could have used the administrative law judge, but these are relatively smaller items and, and maybe wouldn't make as much of sense to put on a administrative law judge calendar. So it's up to you, that's just what I'm recommending is, because you can't be an appeal authority anymore as a council for these kinds of things. So one option is board adjustment, the other option is just to have the administrative law judge do those as well. Or if an adjustment is five people, I think there's an alternate, but they hear land use appeals. So if they disagree with what city staff does or planning commission, that's our internal appeal authority, so that somebody, before somebody goes to court, they can do the internal appeal here.
Can we just call it appeal board and then up in the definition adjust, that way if it needs to change at some further point in time, it's just a modification to the.
We could do that. You want to do it that way?
Yeah.
All right, I will do that. Okay, I will do that. But you're okay with the board of adjustment being that definition for now?
Not sure.
Okay. All right, so then our next change, if we scroll through, gets us to four, two, A eleven, almost to twelve. And this is a criminal background check section. And again, mainly what we're focused on now is getting an original or certified copy of criminal history from BCI. So we're just being a little bit more specific. Before we had perform a criminal background check, what we want is, and everybody knows what BCI is, basically the state version of FBI or whatever. It's the, where those official records are kept on a statewide basis. But we just wanted to be more precise and specific that we want an actual original certified copy from that agency of their criminal.
Should we spell out what BCI stands for?
We probably should. Yeah, we'll do that, Bureau of Criminal Identification.
Yeah, see, I thought it was investigation, I thought it was Bureau of Criminal Investigation.
It is.
It is.
I misspoke. Yeah, Bureau of Criminal Investigation.
There should be a TV show. Because there's an FBI, there's like a dozen FBI TV shows, SVU, BCI.
That's right. All right, so then the next change may not be for a while, I think. We may not have anything for the, oh, yeah, there's, eventually there's a little bit of yellow. Tell me when you find your next yellow. Which is what section number? Four, two, F four?
Would it be easier to put BCI? I, I don't know if this heading has definitions, but would it be better to put Bureau of Criminal Investigations in a definitions and then parentheses with BCI and then just use?
That's a good idea.
Then just use BCI and the rest?
It is used quite commonly throughout.
That's a better way to do it.
So we'll add it as a definition. So we'll add it as a definition. Yeah. So there on the bottom of that page, you have the. Just another one of those certified copy. We don't want just any old copy. We want an original or certified. And then our next change isn't for another little while.
Oh, I'm Scott.
It looks like it's four two H one. And here we're dealing with massage. I guess apparently in the past, we used to have a separate city massage license. But now we just have a regular city business license that covers it. So we're just gonna drop that, that term.
Can we put in something about free massages for council members as a requirement for, never mind.
But operationally now, we don't have any different form or process or.
No, because they have to go through uh, through the state licensing and everything else.
Right, so the extra is not us doing it, it's the state doing it.
For us to require, it, it just adds another extra type of license that we really don't need.
We leave the extra up to Division of Occupational Professional Licensing to handle. Okay. All right, so that's what that one is. And then if we scroll through a little more. So let's call out the section number.
Four two R two, good landlord program.
Goes all the way to four two R two?
Yeah, section D. It's just a city manager to city. Yep. Subsection D or section D.
Okay, and that's just.
City manager to city administrator.
Changing city manager to city administrator. And then the next page, um yeah, four two R four. These are just, you know, a lot of times now where we've standardized how we capitalize and don't capitalize words and. And that's all. It's just changing to standardize it to our new system is, other than of course, we are changing, we are adding. Mayor in the place of city manager there. So instead of planning commission. Manager and council, it's planning commission, city administrator, mayor and council. So we're putting city administrator and mayor in place of manager.
I do appreciate the ju- the judicious use of the Oxford comma, by the way. Throwing that out there. It's right there after mayor.
Well, standard within itself, anyway. Uh, so then on the next page, same thing, just changing to, to no capitalization. And then I don't think there's a change for another while.
I'm looking. Oh, four two U five.
Four two.
Four two U. Four two U.
Four two U. Okay.
Four two U five. Yeah, these are droid acronyms.
They really are for Star Wars, yeah.
That's an administrator manager thing, there's.
Yeah, so just again, the same, just changes of manager to administrator there. And I know we've reworked mobile food businesses in the past. I don't think there's anything else there.
That's all of it.
That's all, folks. For now, yeah. Say that again?
I think by the end of this, we're gonna have to go through the whole code again and make sure we didn't miss anything.
I mean, that's the thing is because other than occasional substantive changes here and there, we haven't focused on substantive changes. In fact, we've continuously earmarked. Areas that need substantive changes.
No, and I think for the most part, it is mostly just academic stuff.
Right. All right, that's all I have, mayor.
Okay, we'll move to uh discussion regarding water rates. Denise. This bottle will now cost, and if you drink five of them, you're in tier two. So let's give them now costs.
So I'm gonna. Real quick, before we start this. I, I wish this had been much, much sooner in the meeting. I wish this was the first thing that we did. I worry that the public's gonna say. Look, you waited till after the meeting was over. It was the last workshop item. Nobody else was in the room. You're trying to do this behind closed doors. I, I'm hoping people will come back and watch the recording and see that we are trying to have this in public, but I, I wish this was. Much earlier in the conversation, much earlier in the year.
If we'd have done this at five thirty though, they would've said, oh, you did it before I could even get off work. And I mean, there's, there's gonna be people, no matter when you do it.
Five thirty's a lot different though than nine thirty.
And the door is open? Yeah, this is considered primetime television now.
Both of them are back here facilitating the broadcast.
Take one down, pass it around, ninety-eight copies of a water rate study.
That was recorded, by the way. I'm now a recording, I'm now a recording artist.
Oh, I'm Ken Wallentine. Okay.
Water.
Wa- the water rate study.
The moment you've all been waiting for.
Okay, and the clicker's not gonna work. So Corbin's gonna have to drive. Maybe.
Is it turned on?
I don't know. How do you turn it on?
Point it at the computer.
Oh, turn it on. It's beeping now.
Don't point it at the screen.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Um, so a year ago. The city was forced to take immediate action in response to a financial challenge. In the water fund, which threatened its credit and future ability to finance infrastructure. That was in October of two thousand eighteen. In doing so, the city adopted a rate structure recommended by a third party as a temporary solution. With the commitment to reevaluate the structure at one year. Uh, we knew the struct- that this uh structure was, the solution was not perfect. However, we were confident it would provide the necessary temporary fix. We're following through on our commitment. Oh, wrong way. Following through on our commitment and are now reporting our findings as we focused on a few questions. First of all, did the rate structure accomplish what was needed to provide that financial stability for the water fund? Was the rate structure organized to be fair and effective to everyone participating? And is there a way to provide cost relief to those low water users? My office was tasked with evaluating all, evaluating all the data and there was a lot. It was, when I downloaded the data that we evaluated for the study. There were six hundred and ninety-seven thousand rows of data and there were forty-eight columns across. So the spreadsheet that we worked is pretty big and um we have it available to do work on it later if, if you would like to do so. Um, if you want any changes made during this work session, we can see what the net effect of them would be. And provide a recommendation to you on um if we would recommend any changes. And here's what we found. In short, um your fix worked. Last year before you made that change, you ended the water fund with negative eight point seven million dollars of unreserved fund balance. Which is why you needed to make that change in October. When we ended the year this year, which is June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen, our audited financial statements will you, which you'll receive on your neck, at your next meeting. Ended the year at five hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So you brought it out of the hole that far in just a short amount of time. So it did do exactly what you needed it to do during that time period. However, what I found in this, in the data was that a proportional burden of this change was placed on the residents. Um, and that as such, it resulted in a subsidization of the commercial and landscape users. We'll go through that in a moment. Today I come to you with a plan that provides both financial sustainability as well as cost equity to the users of the water system. The proposed tiered rate structure will provide residential users with a combined net decrease of twelve percent. And propose an implementation plan to shift additional costs to those that are now being subsidized. So we'll go through um some of the information as we did it. So this is a picture of our current rate study. Um, the number of meters in our system or the number of accounts or users in our system, for residential, it's eighty-nine percent of, of the system is made up of residential users. Or twenty-two thousand six hundred meters. Commercial makes up eleven percent with two thousand eight hundred and eighty-four meters.
Denise, real, real quick, commercial, uh, an apartment building or a multi-packs falls under commercial.
Correct, and HOAs are commercials.
And HOAs are commercials as well, okay.
Correct. Anyone that has a meter larger than three-quarter inch. Um, or one, there are an occasional one inch, but not very many of them that are residential.
Right, but there are fourteen hundred commercial three-quarter inches, so.
Yes, there are.
Size is not the determining factor, it's who's using it, right?
No, yeah, you're right. The base rates currently under the water structure were different between residential and commercial for that three-quarter inch meter and the five-eighths, a five-eighths inch meter, for those of you that don't know, is a really old meter. It will probably be changed out to a three-quarter, but. Were different. So the commercial, while the residential rate was um increased with the last rate study, the commercial rate was not increased. So um we will be talking about that in a moment. In addition, this is the water consumption rate and I put them side by side. So you can see that for zero to seven thousand gallons, a resident is paying two dollars and nineteen cents per thousand gallons. Whereas a commercial entity is only paying a dollar ninety-one. And the landscape meter for a commercial entity is typically two twenty-seven for that same exact water. And you can see as it goes down, the greens are what we consider two, tier two for those users and the reds are tier three. You can see that residences hit their tier three at twenty-one thousand gallons. Whereas in commercial, they only hit a tier three if they use five million gallons.
So may I ask, the reason the residential is higher is because you're including the base fee with that?
No, that is only the consumption rate.
That's just the tier.
It's just the tiers.
Right. Only consumption, water for water. Current statistics, um.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Of course.
I see that twenty-one to one-ten. And there was discussions over the summer about who used what water. The, the highest one that I saw was ninety-nine thousand.
That's a residential user.
Oh, the highest here I see, well, let's go to the tier three is one-ten. So do we have any data that shows if residential are using more than one-ten?
Oh, there are plenty of residencies using more than one-ten. I have residences that got um water bills that were eighteen hundred dollars.
They were really, really thirsty that month.
Well, but.
Took long showers.
There was one person that contacted me and they had, um, they just said what they paid in their water bill. And I, I calculated it using our residential rates and it was a hundred and five thousand gallons. And you calculate how many hours in a month and it ended up being a hundred and thirty-eight gallons per hour, twenty-four seven for thirty days. For a hundred and five thousand gallons in a month. And that, that to me is, is.
In other words, for most.
Over, over consumption.
Yeah, for most households, it's, it's, you gotta try to use over a hundred and ten thousand. I mean, not necessarily if you have a really big lot, right? You have an acre lot and it's all landscaped or something like that. You, you could get there pretty quick, but I think for the, for the average home and, and I think we don't have any one-acre lots in our city because they're all high density. You know, for the average quarter acre lot or, or ten, ten to twelve thousand square foot lot, whatever it's gonna be. Um, it'd be, you gotta try to get over a hundred thousand gallons.
This, this hundred and five thousand gallons was a quarter acre lot, point two six.
Yeah, they're trying. You gotta try.
You're welcome. All right, so when I took this data. Oh, sorry, you're right. And you're right, if, if someone were to drain a swimming pool and, or a hot tub on a regular basis, you're right, that does consume quite a bit of water.
Most hot tubs are about three hundred gallons, by the way. We recommend that you change it three, two to three times a year. That's a total of nine hundred gallons, by the way, over a year.
All right, so what, what I did was um in order to come up with a study is we took the current rate structure. And even though it wasn't in force during the entire period, we took from October of two thousand eighteen through September of two thousand nineteen. So that's really the data that we um focused on. Um, we also took the consumption data from the year previous, so October seventeen to, to September eighteen. Um, so that we could confirm that the data was consistent over a two-year period because weather trends can change some things as well. So it was pretty consistent for us. But we're assuming those rates were in effect the entire time and we used consumption. So the first thing we're gonna go over is consumption, which is that first section. How many units did we sell? And what a unit is, is a thousand gallons. So our residences cons- or we sold to our residences three point five billion gallons of water. Or fifty-five percent of the water that we purchased. The commercial entities purchased one point nine billion gallons or thirty-one percent. Our city parks and facilities used four hundred and fourteen million gallons or six percent.
And can I just correct these numbers really quick? You have a unit as a, as, oh, is it?
Right, I, I'm saying the, the units are.
Oh, a thousand gallons. So it's, so it's one point nine billion.
Right.
Three point five, okay.
Right. Um, landscape meters, two hundred and forty-seven. Now, when we move forward, I want you to think of commercial with landscape meters. Because they will always be together. They're always the same people that own them, okay? And you have to also know that landscape meters do not have a base fee associated, associated with them at all. We only charge them usage, okay? So landscape meters use four percent of the water. Hydrant meters are the ones that we rent to the developers who are constructing.
Sorry, just.
Councilman Jacobs?
Real quick question on the landscape versus commercial again. So every landscape user is a commercial user.
Correct.
But is there a landscape user that does not have another commercial meter?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so.
But they would be categorized in the same.
Right.
Block.
I'm just trying to think if there's a, a user of landscape water who's not also paying an availa- availability charge on their commercial meter.
Right, right. And that, and that I do not know. There's just too much data to know that for me. But um I know that all but eleven of the landscape meters are c- are considered owned by commercial entities. There are eleven landscape meters that are actually considered residential.
Okay, but then that, those eleven would be paying their availability charge on the residential.
Correct. They have an availability charge on another meter. Yes, thank you. So those hydrant meters made up two percent of the water. So we sold six point two billion gallons of water. What we purchased from Jordan Valley is six point three billion gallons of water. Um, and so we have an uncapture or loss in the system. That means during delivery, water's leaking out of the line or there's a water leak or those kinds of things of about two percent. It's actually very, very, very low. Um, so we're actually doing pretty well with utility billing. I was, I was. Grateful to see that number that low. And that was consistent over two years as well. So I can, I confirmed that number. The next thing we're gonna look at though is the revenue sharing of that um water sold and the water purchased. The residential users paid seventy-two percent of the revenue that was needed in the water fund based on this current rate structure. So while they consumed fifty-five percent of the water, they paid for seventy-two percent of the water. That's where that subsidization has come in.
And, and Denise, this is under the premise that a gallon of water is the same for everybody. If, if a gallon of water is a penny, then it should be a penny for everyone.
Correct. It's the same storage, the same infrastructure and the same gallon of water that's purchased from the same supplier. There is no difference between a gallon of water that's provided to a, a commercial business or a gallon of water that's provided to a resident.
Thank you.
However, comma. I'm just wondering, I'm trying to, I have a, an incomplete thought in my head and help me walk through this. The, there's more into that revenue than just the tiered usage number. There's also the availability charge number.
And that's in this revenue number.
Right, and I'm just, and I'm, right, exactly, that's what I'm saying. So I'm wondering if there isn't a reason, and there may not be, I'm just trying to think through this as I, as I, as I go. If there's not a reason why a residential availability charge might be higher than a commercial availability charge, now as I think this out, there probably shouldn't be. And the reason that kinda led me down this path is there's a whole lot more residential users. Therefore, they're responsible for more of the system, therefore maybe the system, you know, the, the theory behind an availability charge right is infrastructure and, and keeping the system working. Therefore, they should pay a higher percentage of that because there are more of them, but if everybody's paid the same amount, then they would be paying a higher percentage of that. So never mind, I think I. Got that out of my head.
Okay, you talked us out of it.
Everybody's paying ten dollars, the residential users will be paying many more millions than the commercial users will just because there's many more of them, so. I think I thought through that as I was speaking.
On the same token, if the residential user's paying a, using less water, but their base fee is higher, then their percent is higher. Even though they use less water, so they're paying a pers- a higher percentage there.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's kinda where I'm landing, yeah.
And commercial users contributed twenty-two percent of the revenue while they consumed thirty-one percent of the water. Cities at three percent while we consumed six percent. Uh, landscape meters, four and two, and hydrant meters, two and one. So you can see it was almost half. The next column over is gonna tell you. The next column over is gonna tell you, if we need twenty-six-point-two, which we do, twenty-six-point-two million dollars to have our water system run under the current structure that we have it at, to purchase six-point-three billion gallons of water, each thousand gallons of water would cost four dollars and twenty-one cents, okay? That would just be the total cost of water. And I think Councilman McConaughey has talked about that a lot in, in, over the years, that he's like, let's just charge four-twenty-one for every thousand gallons of water and forget the rest of it, right? But the state won't allow us to do that, so, that's not really on the table. However, that's really what we're targeting, right, is we're looking for that cost recovery. Residential users right now are paying five-thirty-four for every thousand gallons of water, with their availability charge and the water that they've purchased.
That's, that's not necessarily what we're targeting, because there are some different theories. I mean, that, that Raftella study had, Raftella, right, or was that?
Right.
I'm trying to remember which one was the business license fee and which one was the water rates. They had like three or four different philosophies of how you could come to the number, and how much should be availability versus cost.
And we're gonna talk about those here in just a moment.
But this number is overall balance, if you look at your average cost of water. If you only use five thousand gallons of water over the course of a month, when you look at your availability plus your usage, your average cost is closer to ten dollars per thousand gallons of water. Your commercial users, if you're using over a hundred thousand units, or you're using over a million gallons a month, you're closer to two dollars and ninety cents per thousand gallons, so that's.
Right, and I'm, and I'm not saying that we're in a, in a perfect world, but I'm not, I'm also not saying that that is necessarily what, what we want to get to is just a usage charge, and it should be four dollars and twenty-one cents.
No, and we're not asked, we're not recommending that at all.
To clarify, that's not what I was suggesting earlier. I wasn't suggesting we only, we, we, we do just that charge. I know that we have to have it broken out, but my, my issue was, I want to be as close to fair as possible. Um, we, I wanna be as close to paying for what we use. If the, the commercial entities are only paying, I mean, well, if, if, if somebody's only paying two dollars and ninety cents per thousand gallons.
Right.
But the actual cost to get the water there is four dollars and twenty-one cents. How do we bring that so that they're actually paying for what they use? If they're paying five-thirty-four per thousand, and the actual cost is only four tw- how, how do we balance that out? And that's where we need to have the conversation as to, how, how do we do that?
And we will have that conversation. Yeah, we're gonna get there in just a second.
I wasn't suggesting four-twenty-one flat across the board, I know we can't do that.
Well, even, I, I know, but I just didn't wanna get to a point where we said, okay, well, the availability charge is now gonna be like zero-point-zero-one.
No, 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 no.
Because we have to have one, and the tiers will be four-nineteen, four-twenty, and four-twenty-one.
And the reason we have the availa- the reason we have the availability charge is to cover our fixed costs. Those that, even if somebody didn't turn on the tap, we would still be running up electricity for the pumps. We'd still have maintenance on the tanks, we still have the infrastructure that we have to maintain. We still have meter replacements that have to happen, even if they don't turn it on. So the availability should cover that, and the usage cover the remainder.
I remember having this discussion with you five, six years ago, I was on the budget committee.
I was gonna bring it, I was gonna bring it up when somebody was saying, oh, we didn't have anybody bring this up until July. I'm like, wait a minute, I did.
A, a, I think a good analogy, if I may, Denise, between availability and commodity. So in, in, uh, in our funds, we have the property tax, which is pretty stable, and we have sales tax, which is pretty variable, depending on people buying. The availability charge is like property tax, it's a stable source of revenue for the water, and the commodity varies a lot. You use a lot of it in the summer and not very much in the winter, so it's kinda like sales tax. So that's how I, as, as I've talked to Denise over this, that's how I've kinda framed it in my mind. Stable and variable and.
It's a good analogy.
Availability is, is kinda like property tax, and commodity is like sales tax.
The trick is, you have to commit to buy a certain amount, even though you may not use that amount.
Correct.
In case you get to a column year.
And that is true, but we're not even close to that. And there has been a place where I've served before, where we did not hit our target for what we needed to buy. Um, and they were able to sell it to someone else, because there's always demand on their system. So I think that that is.
That's good.
The lowest of risks.
There's like three more rabbit holes I wanna go down, but you've got this really nice proposed equalized consumption rate, so I will.
You'll wait for a minute. Okay, so I wanted to show those of you that don't, um, like numbers as much as I do, in chart format, kind of what this looks like. Um, so you can see that the water purchased, how much was the residential, and then what the wa- water revenue looked like, just so that you can kind of visualize what that, um, what that looks like. And another comparison, kind of one of those analogies, is under the current rate structure, if that same three-quarter inch meter used a hundred thousand gallons in a month, the bill for service would be three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for our residential users, two-twelve forty for our commercial users, and two-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars for our landscape meters. And, um, and the discussion is, is there a difference between that same one-hundred thousand gallons? As I asked our city, um, Dave Murphy, our, um, capital projects manager, I said, because I went over all of this well in advance with lots of staff members. Um, and he said, actually, yeah, and I was like, oh crud. And, uh, he said, there's actually more demand on commercial because of the fire flow requirements. So we're actually required to have more water storage than we would have if we had an entirely residential community. So actually, their demand is actually higher on our infrastructure than, um, a residential user. Now, I'm not saying that that, we want to weight that in any of this, but that was an interesting discussion to me. All right, financial requirements, what does the water fund need? And this is where we're gonna come into that exact discussion that we've been talking about, what's best practice for base rate versus consumption, that kind of thing. But our financial requirements right now are a water purchase of ten-point-four million dollars. It's been consistent over three years, so I think that's a good number. I've talked to Jordan Valley Water, they did not raise our rates this year, and they will not be raising them next year, likely. There would have to be something that changes tremendously for them. That has a lot to do with Riverton coming online and taking away from their secondary water system and going more to a culinary water system. Um, and so they're taking some of that capacity, pushing the rates down a bit in the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. So I'm saying ten-point-four for now. Operations and administration, which includes all of the maintenance that goes on on the system, personnel, that kind of thing, is eight-point-six million. Capital improvements and maintenance at five.
Does that include the meter replacement program?
The AMI, the radio read meter, it does, yes. And that will actually drop a little bit. It's actually a little less than that, but yes. And I think that we're gonna need to keep that in the system for other things that are actually on the list that have kinda gotten pushed down as the radio read meters, um, urgency has come up. So we've kinda just re-prioritized things. And debt service is at two-point-five. Now, our debt service is really only about one-point-nine million. However, we do have some fleet leases that are also being paid out of that debt service that support the water fund. Now, best practice would say, if you need twenty-six-point-six million dollars, that, that the operations, capital, and debt should be in your base rate. Those are fixed costs, those aren't something that change with use. Um, you're gonna have to pay that no matter what. And that consumption would be forty percent. That would be the water we purchased from Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. And six-hundred thousand is how much we pay to pump water up to the elevated areas in our city. So that's the pumping cost. That would be best practice. However, there is an intolerance in our city for that base rate to be that high. Um, when our residents are getting a bill in the wintertime, their, a bill for a very low water user is about a hundred dollars a month. And that includes their sewer, and their garbage, and streetlight, and it's all the utilities the city provides. However, they're seeing a hundred-dollar bill and saying, I'm not using hardly any water. So that tells me that that base rate tolerance is very low, right? So we're gonna try and push that down a bit, um, as we go on in this discussion. Our current system, or the current, um, rate that you adopted, has a forty-five-fifty-five split. So this is the one that we are currently under. So in essence, what we did was, we, you split the operations fifty-fifty. Um, you split it between consumption and base rate, and then the stable costs of capital and debt fell under the base rate. So forty-five percent of your revenue comes from the base rate, and fifty-five percent of your revenue comes from consumption. However, that's that hundred-dollar bill your residents are getting right now. The next one is proposed. So I'm trying to push that down so that that bill is under a hundred dollars, and I'm, um, hoping to get it down towards that eighty-seven-dollar area. Um, so we're asking that the base rate go down to forty percent of the total revenue, or ten-point-three million dollars, and shifting a bit over into consumption, um, at sixty percent.
Uh, other than a philosophy of people don't wanna pay a higher base rate, what? How do we justify more of that operations going into the cost of the tiers?
There would be no justification outside, it's a conscious decision that we want those lowest water users and the winter use to be under what appears to be a tolerance level.
Okay.
Okay, so it would be policy decision.
This won't solve the problem that we had this summer, though, in July and, and August.
No.
When someone said, my bill was three hundred dollars for water, this is gonna make their bill even higher for water in the summer.
Um, it will for certain users, other users, um, overall.
Well, for me, it won't be a problem, because I, I'm a low user.
Yeah.
But for the.
Super-high users.
The super-high users that called.
The ones that are over seventy-five thousand gallons, they will see the increase. Overall, though, residences typically are seeing between twelve and twenty percent decrease, with the new rate structure and the base rate coming down a bit. So you will, you'll see on the next slide how we push the base rate down a little, or the consumption rate down.
Like I said, the, the, the base rate, I think, is gonna help out over the years. I mean, obviously, you're right, we're paying a hundred dollars for each utility bill, not water bill.
Right.
Um, so this would knock it down to, let's say, eight-ninety, right? Eighty-nine, whatever the number was. But the biggest complaints I had were not February through June, it was July. And so I, you know, without even plugging in the numbers, that person who complained about his three-hundred-dollar bill in July is gonna complain about his four-hundred-dollar bill this July.
At least it's the same guy, though.
It will be, it will be.
But, but, and in my mind.
Well.
It's a different problem. Um, the problem of, I'm using a lot of water and I don't wanna pay a lot for it, is different than what I view as the problem, which is the folks that are not using significant amounts of water, that are using like the five thousand or less, but they're paying more than their fair share, which is subsidizing those who are using significant amounts, and not having to pay the full impact of the cost. So while, while there are folks who are complaining that, I've got this huge water bill, yeah, you're using massive amounts of water and you're paying almost what it costs to use it. But it's the, the smaller ones, the ones on a fixed income, the ones that are not using, that, that are bearing more than their fair share, and those, that.
But those noisier ones are the ones that caused a lot of grief over the whole city this past summer, and. Right, right, but they're, but in, in my mind, it's, it's overwatering, and, and. Yes, I agree with you, it is overwatering. But I'll go back to everything that happened this past summer, it was always like, you raise my rates, I'm not gonna vote for you again. Well. Welcome. Now we're gonna raise the rates again. Welcome to politics. Well, I get that, and I'm not, I'm not talking about water, it's not about votes, but through the whole election, it was always about water rates. Correct. And people were angry. They, they were. So our rate structure right now is two-ninety, once you hit twenty thousand gallons, which is our, our third tier.
Any, yeah, all everyone.
Aren't functioning structurally, because you're on tier-three, I'm on tier-three, you're, we're all on tier-three during the summer, because we're all wa- using more than twenty thousand gallons. Uh, Kern's Improvement District, which some of our residents, well, not you. Kern's Improvement District, which some of our residents in District Three have as their water company. We're charging two-ninety. If you use over eighty thousand gallons, their current fee structure is five dollars and sixty-three cents. If you're over eighty thousand gallons, that's per thousand gallons, that's double our rate. Well, but, but the idea, in my mind, is, is, is conservation-minded. Water is only gonna get more expensive, especially if Jordan Valley has to find new sources of water. So we have to, this is what I've been saying for two years, so it shouldn't be a surprise to a lot of people, that we've got to come up with a way to help educate people the, the proper way to water their lawn. What is overwatering? Incentives to conserve, which is, I think, what, uh, Councilmember McConaughey's talking about, where these folks that are using five, six, ten thousand gallons of water are, are paying their fair share. And those that are.
And then some.
And then some. And those that are consuming vast amounts of this finite resource are, are paying for that heavy use.
Well, and, and Councilman Lamb, the, actually, the rate structure that we're going to propose here in a moment will push down the rate for everyone that's using less than fifty thousand gallons. So it's, once you hit that fifty thousand to a hundred, that that's where.
Those below fifty aren't the ones making the noise.
Yes, you're right.
Squeaky wheels and grease and something like that.
Yes.
I, I think we need to be very loud and educating in the next six months, before it gets hot. This is what's happening with water rates. If you use less than this much, you will pay less. If you use more, you will pay more, therefore use less. And.
It didn't work this summer.
We didn't shout it like we should've.
Communicate, we didn't communicate.
The, the problem is that we've had a struc-. The, the, the problem is we've had a structural imbalance in the rates for, for the better part of a decade. And those who have not used much have borne the cost subsidizing those that have. And as we try to say, okay, well, what's fair, what's that? We, we, we have to decide what problem are we gonna fix? Is it?
Yeah.
The problem of people saying, I'm paying too much, make the water cheaper? Or is it the problem of, okay, well, let's, let's pay what's fair and equitable across the board? Fair and equitable across the board is not gonna solve.
No, and I, and I agree, and I think that, that message needs to be, needs to be delivered, that that guy who's paying three hundred dollars a month in July and August is actually spending, he's only paying three-fifty, but he's getting four hundred or five hundred dollars worth of water, under the new structure. So it's not, you know, his, his free lunch is going away, yeah, he's gonna be mad. That guy's gonna be mad, but most of the people who are paying for that guy's free lunch are not gonna be mad.
And the place, frankly, the place where this is gonna have the biggest impact, I think we need to have, uh, again, it emphasizes the need for care and intact in how we do this, is the impact that's gonna have on the businesses, the commercial users. Because, again, going back a few slides, where you've got folks who are using, I, I mean, it was near a billion gallons of water, and they're paying two dollars and twelve cents per thousand gallons. And if that comes up to the actual cost, which we were saying was four-forty, or four-twenty-one, three-thirty is what the Raftella study estimated it at. Obviously, we, we can't put it right at that amount, but there's gotta be some care and planning, and we're jumping ahead of the slide deck, so I would suggest we turn it back to Denise.
Um, the, and, and I think the other thing that, um, I'm gonna be working with Tony on is a campaign to push people towards equalized pay. Um, in the past, the city has really, um, not understood what equalized pay is, nor has it been implemented well or educated. So I believe if we can push some people towards equalized pay, it will assist them in those summer months in not having that big a bill, um, if they're the highest of water users. It makes a lot of sense to those that are high-water users.
I'd be interested in that, but hon- honestly, based on historically how we've done, I'd be scared. Like, only having updates in, only having updates once a year that didn't correspond with.
Right, and we want to change that, so that it will be up, um, several times a year, that we will be able to look at that.
And if we can get that intended, it can be, we can capture stuff in real time. People could log in and see what their water bills are. My, my, I'm on equal pay, and my water bill will go down about ten dollars a month. So that's getting an equal pay price in October under the old rates, watering under the new rates, and I still have a credit that's gonna give me about a ten-dollar decrease per month going forward.
Yeah, where we got in real trouble was when the, the rates were updated in October. Council changed the rates end of the year, like December, January. New rates didn't go into effect until the following October. And there were some IT issues with getting rates loaded in there, and it was.
Uh, yeah, we'll make sure that that doesn't happen. We have created a user group with our utility billing, um, staff, between all the cities that are using our same software. Uh, we initiated the group ourselves, um, it was, uh, I put it, my utility billing supervisor in charge of it, and she ran with it. Um, they had their first meeting last month, and the synergy in there, in knowing how everyone's using a system, the same system, but so differently, and there's some that are running the system very, very well. So we're starting to learn from others on how to fix the problems that are current, have been going on in our city for quite some time. I think it's all about networking and making those relationships work. So let's talk about the proposed base rate structure. So, um, I just put the current base rate structure up here, just so that you have another reference to it. And in this dark blue would be what I would propose as a base rate structure for everyone, not a difference between residential and commercial. So we would bring the base rate for a three-quarter inch meter down to thirty dollars for our residents, and up from twenty-one to thirty for the businesses that have that same meter. Um, and there are quite a few, which you saw on the slide before, when you saw how many meters. Um, the five-eighths inch meter, there's really no difference, so we're gonna do with the same thirty. And then the one-inch meter, we're gonna push it down a little bit, and then, um, adopt the same rates that were proposed in the Raftella study. It works financially, which you'll see in a moment, when you really look at, um, what financial impact, uh, will occur. We did increase the hydrant meter, um, monthly rate. Um, we actually will probably come back with a, a, uh, request to increase that as well. In that, we're not. In that, we're not getting our meters returned and we don't want it to be too easy for them to just leave them in their back of their trucks and. Run around the city with them in case they get a job. We want them back so that we can rent them back out, so.
I say sell them the meter, then give them a half refund and they return it.
Right.
Or charge.
Is there a going to be a charge for the landscape meter?
Um, I am not, I have not recommended that. And if I do implement that, that certainly would bring down a meter rate somewhere else. But because a landscape meter is only active a part of the year, um, it tends to be most places don't charge an availability charge. It doesn't mean that it's the right or wrong thing to do. I think it's up for discussion.
When we're looking at the rates last time around, the availability charge was based mostly on the replacement cost and saying, okay, well, the meter lasts twenty years, here's the cost for the meter, let's divide by twenty. So i- I mean, if there's a cost to us versus if we require that they pay for the meter when it needs to be replaced, then then I'd be okay. But otherwise, I would suggest.
Should be a charge for it.
That's a good discussion.
There should be a charge.
Yeah, and I, how about if it's used, six months out of the year, we charge half of what a twelve-month comparable availability charge would be.
You still have to go read it.
Uh, sa- I mean, same thing, if you've got a, if you've got a town home and you live here for the summer, then you go to Phoenix for the winter, you're not using that for six months, you still get charged.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's a good argument and I certainly can plug it in here. Um, they're all, landscape meters are. Brian, are they three-inch, so typically, or are they different sizes? They're all different sizes. So let's look at the cost of that and I can plug that in. Yeah, absolutely. All right, so our pro- the next proposal that we're going to have is that we want to equalize the consumption rate. So again, this is the same chart that you just saw. This is our current rate structure. And in the dark blue is what I'm going to propose as a consumption rate, as an equalized rate for everyone. So zero to seven thousand gallons at two dollars, you can see we've pushed that first, that low water user rate down. Um, so their base rates come down and their first seven thousand gallons have come down for everyone. And then eight to twenty-five at two twenty-five, twenty-six thousand to fifty thousand at two seventy-five. Again, all of those are lower than the current residential rates. For all of those residential users. However, it is an impact to the commercial users and the landscape meters. Fifty-one to a hundred is at three twenty-five and every gallon over a hundred thousand gallons is at three seventy-five. The next proposal um is a little different for the city, however, there are lots of cities that um use this kind of structure. There is a twelve-hundred-foot elevation change between the lowest part of our city and the highest part of our city. Um, it costs us six hundred thousand dollars a year to pump water past those zones. So another proposal that you can look at is. And you could choose one or the other, the equalized rate, which is more equalized for all the city users, or you could look at a zoned rate. Which would actually push the rates even further down for those that live in the lowest elevations and push the cost of. Um, pumping cost recovery to those higher zones. I found that in um for at the inflator, I would need five percent to get. The rate up to where it would generate enough for um about half of the water use to forty-eight hundred west. So zone one would be to twenty-seventh west, zone two would have a five percent inflator on it and get to forty-eighth west. And then zone three would be on top of the twenty, the zone one, so it's another seven and a half, not on top of five, but just overall. To get to zone three, which would be um would bring in exactly six hundred thousand dollars if we were to do that. Again, completely a decision that you can make whether you want everyone to pay the same rate. Or whether you want that pumping cost to be pushed off to the users that actually need the pump.
My question on that is, should that not be ideally, so up, you know, on this. Slide, a couple of slides back.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that six hundred thousand broken out into the consumption charge. Ideally, I see where you're going with this. I was thinking that, I mean, in my mind, and I think some other cities do that and do zones on the base rate, but not on the tiered. Because a gallon of water is a gallon of water.
They actually do it all on the tier.
Do they all do it on the tiers?
They do.
What would be the the theoretical thought of putting it on the base rate and not on the tiers?
Either South Jordan or Harriman did it on the availability charge because they they.
Harriman does it on both.
On both.
Yeah.
So that's another policy decision then, for the most part.
A complete policy decision. Three cities do the zoned rates, Draper, Harriman and Midvale. I looked up all the cities that um use Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District. Um, and so this would be similar to um their model.
And they they put it on availability because it's pumping.
Right, that's what I was thinking, it's a system charge, not necessarily a usage.
However, the more used, the more it pumps, the more it's going to cost.
Right, exactly. And so that zone, let's talk about zone three, right? We have a proposed, we have somebody coming to the city that is a very high water user. And they wanna go into zone three, that could substantially increase the pumping cost for that, for the city overall. But the benefit would be to that area.
Right, and well, there there's always a socialized component to this, there always has been, there always will be.
A- and that's what government does, the socialized, I mean, look at the roads. We don't charge someone more that lives on a circle to go plow their street for five houses. As we do is we drive down Seventieth and plow that same street for thousands of users, so.
Yeah.
It's a difficult one.
We don't plow it as much and it's also far lower on the priority list, so.
I do, I do though.
We might skip it altogether.
We can live without roads.
Well.
Theoretically. Um, no, I d- I just do wonder whether where whether it belongs on a consumption or whether it belongs, if we do it at all. Whether it belongs on an availability, because it is an infrastructure cost, but it is also a usage cost, so maybe it should be split. I don't know, as the only council member who does live in zone three. On this uh map, I just, it's something I think about.
However, what I would like to consider.
I live in a commercial.
Before we did it, just do that for the large users, so after, if they're over a certain amount, because the smaller users, I think it's more. It's more unfair for the larger user because they are gonna move the cost for the rest of the city, it may be paying less for their water than the rest of the city is doing. So they end up being subsidized. For the smaller users, I think we have a less of a chance of that because there's so many of them.
So are you suggesting that that augmented consumption rate would just be for the larger users?
Correct. I know that would be a a hard nut to crack.
That'd be like a pivot table in Excel and I'm not good.
I could do the math, it's not the math I'm worried about, I'm good at that part, it's the.
I worry about the attorney saying discrimination.
Yes. Yeah.
Well, no, because.
If you've got a, if you've got a.
You're discriminating according to gallons used, not according to anything else. Well, then you just put it in the tiers, and you just put it in the tiers.
Making giant tier.
So you make it, you make it, instead of seven and a half on every tier, you make it seven and a half on tier one and you make it ten percent on tier two and fifty percent on tier. A hundred percent on tier five or whatever.
Right.
Right.
And that's how you do that.
Okay.
And that, that I think is more defensible. I don't know, that's just a thought.
Okay, so these, again, this, you know, this session, we're giving you some information, we're gonna have to have more discussion for sure. So I want you to just kinda talk and think about and talk with each other because I think all of these are really good, good talking points and items. And this is a big policy decision as well. It will impact a lot of people.
Denise, can I ask a clarifying question? Earlier, you mentioned six hundred thousand dollars in pumping costs, that's the cost for us to pump that water. Up there, so there's the difference between the zones we incur on pumping. Is there also some, um. Brian and I were just talking about this, in our water purchase, we purchase more expensive water from Jordan Valley when we purchase it up high on the system.
That's true.
So part of our water purchase dollar amount still includes the extra cost for getting the water up to the higher zones, is that correct?
Not included in that six hundred thousand dollars, because it was easy for me to find that six hundred thousand dollars, right? I know what that electric bill is. Uh, it's really kinda hard to grab that. Jordan Valley, I could probably do it, working with um their CFO. But um, but yes, there is additional cost in excess of that six hundred thousand, but this inflator will get us to write out that, at least that. Electric charge recovery.
Tilted kinda more towards a a fairer system.
I wanna be careful about getting too far into the weeds because if you go back s- six, seven years, the conversations that we're having as a council were. Okay, well, we're pumping for some people, but some people also have more water from the well versus from Jordan Valley, so do we need to adjust the rates for this? And they started trying to throw in all sorts of variables, make, trying to make it look overly complicated, so that in the end, we would just say, you know what, bag it, let's just do the flat rate for everybody. Which is not fair for for most, so I I I like what's been presented so far. Um, I think. I'm not opposed to the proposed zone consumption, but I I certainly don't wanna go further than that, like trying to incorporate other variables, like.
It's an easy cost recover. If I have a citizen come to me and say, I want you to justify this this zone, I can easily go back to a utility fee.
Right, but but knowing what Corbin just said is is a thing. That justifies putting it more in consumption, more so than in availability. So it maybe helps make the argument for why it should maybe be in both. As the only zone three member of the council.
I I I think we need to make it simple, easy to understand for residents, equitable.
Justifiable.
Justifiable, and there's, I'm sure, a bunch of other words I can use.
Forgettable.
Well, and it's also predictable. I mean, the the one thing, the one thing the businesses, when they came and spoke about the one. I don't think they were necessarily opposed to the rate increase as a number, as the timing. Because their budgets were already set and we were impacting budgets by hundreds of thousands of dollars with the change. Um, I know, I think it was Corbin or somebody had talked to, uh, had called some some businesses. And when it was explained it was gonna be a forty percent increase, they're like, oh, okay, as long as, as long as it's not this number. Um, and we have businesses that were here that that uh were opposed to the increase, but they weren't opposed to the increase as much as the the timing.
And we're gonna talk about that in two slides. So I have an implementation plan that is business, is as business friendly as I think I could make it. So we'll go through that here in a moment. So the next thing is the effect of the proposed rates. So. First columns are the consumption percentage, I'm trying to put things side by side so that it's easy comparison. Our current rate structure, so the revenue percentage, and then the new proposed rate structure, whether it was the equalized rate or the zoned rates, it's exactly the same. The math works exactly the same. So it would be um consumption at fifty-five percent for residential and revenue at sixty percent. Um, I was, I would get all the way down, but over two years, I saw a little bit of a swing when we have a um. A drier year and there is more water use, so I kinda gave that five percent flexibility there. Because if our water users, if we have a dry year, our water users for residential will be the ones that actually increase that water use substantially. Commercial is thirty-one percent to thirty percent. So you can see over here the shift is um savings to the residents of two point eight million dollars. And shifting that between all of the other kinds of cost recoveries or systems that are using the system, um, and equalizing that rate. Now, we recognize that that will be a substantial impact to some of our commercial businesses. Um, however, um, I've worked hard on an implementation plan. So that it would be, um, we could communicate this a little better. So this would be my proposition um overall. That for our residential users, that we make the base rate effective January first of twenty twenty, which would be immediate. So you'd see an immediate five-dollar decrease in everybody's bill over that wintertime. That action alone would be one point four million dollars of savings for everyone, but it would be over six months this year and six months next year. Before I would be kicking in a commercial change that would capture whatever I'd be saving for residences. The commercials would then be able to come back into the game and providing that additional revenue. So we would have a one point four million dollar difference. I have talked to Dave Murphy and we would slow down some of that maintenance. And commercial or capital for a temporary period to capture that. But we believe that we can do it. Um, because it's split between those two years. Our residences would see an immediate savings. And we would be able to absorb that into our current financial system without um too much of a stressor. The next thing would be that we make the consumption rates, the new consumption rates effective July first of twenty twenty. Which would be a one point two million dollar savings for the residences, getting to that two point six, two point seven million dollar savings for residential users. That will then shift into the commercial side. The next step would be that we would implement step one of the commercial. We'd do fifty percent of the consumption rate difference because their base rates really didn't change a lot, so that really doesn't matter. But the consumption rate did. So I would go halfway and there's a rate under here that we'll go over in a moment. On Jul- July first of twenty twenty, so we're gonna give them a full seven months in advance. Um, which would recapture that one point three. So when I'm saying that on July first, I'm gonna add the consumption rate for residential. And it would be one point three million dollars of savings there, I'm exchanging that for that fifty percent commercial on that same date. So it's just replacing a dollar with a dollar. And then the next step would be January first of twenty twenty-one. So a full, full year later, implementing the rest of the way to get the commercial rates to where they are. And being unsubsidized by the residential users.
So here's my one ask that we didn't do last, that we didn't do last time, and that was, we have, I'm gonna say, top ten water user businesses, I'm not gonna put, say their names. We kinda know who they are. We need to work with those top ten because in rea- in reality. The commercials don't consume a ton of water outside of those top ten. So they're still gonna, they're still gonna be consuming, I understand it, but comparatively. So let's say, let's say our top one user business, I won't say the name.
I know.
Versus our number eleven.
Is, uh, but your number one and two is.
Exactly.
Is the big ones.
Those are the ones I'm worried about. I'm not worried about the, this isn't gonna hit the other ones, it's hard, it's gonna hit those top two, let's go top five. I, and last time when we did this, I asked, what can we do to help those companies and nothing was done. So as we do this and make this change. I would like to have the conversation, whether that's from the mayor or it's from the, uh, some council members, meet with these companies and talk about water. And how it's gonna affect them, because last time we just said, nope, thirty percent, everybody, good luck.
Is that communication? Is that communication?
It's reaching out.
Like, I have um some specific reports that we can provide and Tony and I are working together, that we can say, this is your use over this time period, this would be the net effect. And how it would affect you as we implement and we do a slower implementation for those commercial users, um, and then explain the process. So I think that that will be helpful. Um, and we already have, Tony already, I went over this with her first. Um, and she asked me, I think I gave her a list of the top forty or so. Um, that it would impact, and she's arted, already started working on, okay, how do we communicate this, how do we meet with them? And I think that your help would be definitely.
And I'm, I'm, without knowing.
Beneficial.
Well, without knowing the numbers, I'm gonna say of those top forty, I don't think thirty will be affected hugely, but those top ten will.
How you do that theoretically is implement the first change having less of an implementation on the. Top tiers. And the second change having more of an implementation on the top tiers, so that instead of going up one chunk, a chunk, a chunk across all the tiers. You go one chunk and then the first tier, it looks like this, and then the second one looks like that.
And I kinda thought about that, too, yeah, to only change the second level tiers, but um I tried working that math. And I I probably can work it if I had a little, a bit, a little bit longer to do it. Um, but it it kind of felt like getting halfway there.
And my thought, my thought is, don't. My thought would be kinda, kind of along with Chad, I, well. Be- before I go back to Chad's thought, um, there are folks that, some of those commercial users have been receiving a significant subsidy. Because of poor rate structure that is the fault of the city, it's not their fault. Some of them have made very significant investments based on the cost of water. Uh, for their infrastructure, for their business plan, determining what products to produce here versus elsewhere. Um, before we get too much into the implementation, I want to sit down with them, sit down with the top ten and say.
Yep.
What do you guys think? And 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 hear from them, because I can tell you, just professionally, outside of the city council, with my regular day job. My job is creating financial statements, financial reports for various users of of my company's software, and a big part of that is planning. Everybody plans. Um, everybody plans a little bit different. For a number of folks, it might be easier if we say, you know, I like to do it all at once. If you can wait till January first, twenty twenty, I'm sick of getting hit with increase after increase after increase, like you had nothing for years and we had one increase. Then we had six months later another. And some folks don't update their budgets throughout the year, they get approvals from their boards at the start and that's fixed. It's solid for for twelve months, so there may be consensus that they prefer to wait and do it all in January twenty twenty-one. Or there may be a consensus that, you know what, eh, we can do, we can do half and half. I I, in my conversations with some of them previously, most of them understood where we're coming from. I mean, it's a mistake in how the. I mean, it's a mistake in how the rate structure's been set up here that we need to fix, that they benefited from. And none of them wanted to get, uh, get a subsidy. Well, none of them wanted a handout, but they wanted to be involved in the process as we fixed it and, and have a seat at the table. So, um, the, this, what we've gone through tonight has been absolutely fantastic, articulating the issue of saying where we need to be. I think the next step is to have staff sit down with them and say, you tell us, what do you think is the best way to get there? I think we'll find a lot of responsiveness from them and really, we, I think we need to hear from them.
And I like that.
We have gone ten months.
But we also have a business representative here. Could we hear from her for just a minute?
Absolutely.
Is the body okay?
She sat through hours and hours.
And while she's coming up, I wanna mention.
If this, I'm not sure, I, 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 it might be required, um, just to be fair with everybody, but I move to suspend the rules to allow, um, Barbara Riddle to participate in the conversation.
It's a work-study meeting, so it doesn't really matter. Did you say, do we have rules about these?
Well.
Anybody can talk in a work meeting.
But if that's the case, then the general public could be out here and it could be overrun. So I, I would like to make the motion to suspend the rules to allow her participation. They're second.
I'll second.
I'll third.
On favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Barbara.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to see you all in action tonight. I've enjoyed, um, sitting in the audience. And I know you have a lot of work and this is a big issue and, and I would concur with what Chris just, um, shared, our councilman, um, McConaughey. Is, I think businesses wanna do their part, but businesses plan and they budget and budgets are done. And if you can imagine being the CEO of an organization that has to report maybe somewhere else and you've put your budget in place and it's been approved and all of a sudden you come back three months later or six months later and you're showing a significant increase in the cost of water, it makes that individual look like they're not dialed into the community and they're not aware of what's going on. And it's, it's a real hardship for the businesses. And to, to, um, Councilman McConaughey's point, I think businesses aren't looking for a handout. I think they wanna be, um, great stewards and, and participants within a community. They value the services the city provides. They want a strong relationship with the city, but they wanna be able to budget and to plan.
And you know, going back, and nobody wanted to mention Dan, but it was Dan that came in and said, we're okay with the, with the rate increase. It's the timing of it.
Right.
And they are the largest water user we have. Look at the other two, the others that we have in here. The school district is a huge water user. The LDS church is a huge water, huge water user. You know, and we have others that are, are up there as well. And I think if, if we did this right, and that's the thing we're trying to do, is we're trying to do it right. And that's to give them the, the knowledge that this is what's going to happen in time for them to put it in their budgets.
And, and I would, I would, um, offer as well as, as the, the chamber is to bring a group of the business leaders together specifically to sit down with that very discussion of, of how we can all make this work. We all work together. We all want the best for the community. But how can we make that work? And having a seat at the table means a lot to the businesses.
That's a good idea.
Can you give me, um, some sort of, would a year's lead time?
If I were, I can speak fr- I, I mean, I would prefer to have the businesses speak to that.
Of course.
Um, but I, I would, um, anticipate just from a budgeting perspective that a year's time would be more appropriate than a month or six months.
Right.
Um, just from a budgeting perspective. You know, cause again, back to that point of if you know the costs that are coming and you can plan accordingly, then, then it's a much easier hit on your bottom line. Not that we love more taxes or regulations. We don't.
But you know that they're coming and that's, and that's so helpful in, you know, how we predict what kind of projects we're gonna commit to. If we do do a slower implementation, then we just kind of work with the projects that are on the books and how we're going to implement those. So I don't think that that, it's un, it's unreasonable to say that. We would say, all right, we're going to implement this over a year's period of time. Um, it would just be that we couldn't push all of the savings back to the residents at the same time. So we would have to have some shared.
And if we have a little bit of a lag, I mean, maybe we can't push back on the availability till July because we need to build up. Well, so it'll be, at least we're giving.
Build up some reserves.
But, but with the businesses right now, I mean, there's so many under pressure, especially with the, like, the Chinese tariffs and, uh, that are hitting agriculture incredibly hard right now. Uh, to try and hit them with this on, on something that's basically a commodity that's been seen as stable except in West Jordan. Um, having them, having the conversation with them sooner rather than later.
Oh, okay.
And then, so, I mean, having them help set the timeframe for the implementation and taking something off your plate or juggling it a bit.
Denise, what would, what would be the impact on, on an implementation plan that maybe started the residentials on seven, one, twenty, twenty? And that's just, we, we stay as we are until July, one, twenty, twenty. That gives time to get communication pieces.
Build up some reserves. Yeah.
Uh, so we can communicate what we're trying to communicate to the residents.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the commercial, we would just implement January, one, twenty, twenty-one.
I think that's doable.
And that gives a time, that, so now we're being proactive and we're communicating. I'm gonna say how many times I can say communicate tonight, but, um, and we're, and we're gonna launch it correctly. And I just looked up Granger Hunter, who does, um, West Valley's water.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't differentiate between residential and commercial and they have twice as many, and they have water intensive businesses, but they have the same tier, same pricing for commercial and residential, what, just like what you're proposing.
Riverton has a similar model as well.
And then I, I, I'm not proposing this, I'm thinking out loud. I recognize this is risky and not best practice. But what was the amount that you said? Where, where was our, our balance you said?
Five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and forty-three thousand.
No, that was after the fix before. Wasn't like negative how much?
Negative eight point seven million dollars.
So over the course of, how long did we come up with over nine million? So if we were to continue on the trajectory that we're on and not change anything.
We'll build more reserves, right? Yeah.
We're gonna be nine, an additional nine million in the black. If we can maybe find ways to make adjustments for the residential now or, or relatively soon to bring down that trajectory, then while we work with the businesses to kind of bring us up to stability a little bit later, maybe it can be phased in so that we're not having to. I, I, I think now we're getting into nuts and bolts that require further conversation, but getting to this point is so much more than we've done in years.
You know, and I kind of agree with Chris. I'd like to see if it's possible to take a look at, at keeping the residential on your implementation plan the same and pushing the commercial off six months from moving those six months out. So the first effective date would be one, one of twenty twenty-one on step one and step two, then would be seven, one of twenty twenty-one.
Or if the, if the businesses say, you know, we can implement in one year and we'd rather see one change, not two, then we could do that as well.
And then there's the other steps in there too. I, I mean, I, I think most of us had a good conversation with Denise and, um, a- again, to go down a different tangent or a different rabbit hole. Um, you can plug yours for this part. Holy crap. I have been incredibly impressed with what she's been able to come up with. The, the analysis, the detail, taking time to sit down and listen to us. I.
Who does that?
We, we have a lot of really, really good staff here, but I am absolutely floored with the, with, with what Denise has been able to do for us. And wow, thank you. Uh, one, one of the things that she brought up when I was talking to her was the issue with bonding. Um, we've got these water tanks that were bonded for on a ten-year bond that, I mean, it's a fifty-year asset. The idea with your personal budget is I wanna avoid debt as much as possible, but with the city, it's, you wanna spread the cost over the folks who are gonna be using it. You don't wanna pay for something over the course of ten years that people are gonna be benefiting from you for free for forty years after you. Try and spread that out. So there's so many other things, ideas that she threw out there, like, well, maybe we look at refinancing the bonds while rates are low, extend that out over twenty, over, and, and that can have an impact on the, the, the availability charge as well. So a- at this point, I think we've, a- at least for me, we've gone through enough of the higher level structural issues to where I would be confident, if you feel like you've got enough information, I'd be confident backing away and waiting for Denise to come back with a final proposal saying, this is, this is right. I mean, if we like the idea that's being proposed for the forty-sixty split and we like the idea of where she's targeting rates to end up at, I'm ready to back up and continue to let her work her magic and see what she comes back to.
I do wanna echo what, what has been said though. I would like to be able to, um, decrease the burden on the residents with whatever ways you can make that happen. Chris has mentioned some. I'm sure you have more. Um, because I, I think they have been shouldering more of a burden. And I would like to see us get rid of that as soon as possible while working with the businesses.
So is it possible to, is it, because we have two meetings in December, if we want to hit a January first, twenty twenty, probably the first meeting, which is the fourth, I'm guessing, but co- is there a way we can adopt the residential and the commercial effective January first, twenty twenty-one to have time or is that, is that allowed?
I'm, I'm thinking they, I, I would have to ask Rob this. Can they adopt a rate that would be effective that far out? I mean, I'm, the residential, that's not.
We affect the data from schedules all the time.
We wanna meet with them before we adopt that. So I say just adopt the residential.
Resident, adopt the change to the residential and not commercial.
However, comma, adopting the residential is somewhat dependent on adopting a commercial adjustment in the future. So I would hesitate to adopt a residential before we have a conversation.
Unless we're just looking at the trajectory because that nine million difference, if we say, okay, we're comfortable bringing it down here, that's where I'm thinking, okay, well, if that's the direction we wanna go, we wanna see about reducing the residential impact sooner rather than later. We wanna see how to impact, or how to implement this, especially with the commercial users. I, I would think that probably gives you enough of a desire for the direction so that you could come back at our next council meeting and say, here's, here's what we can do to get there and here's what we can, here's what we can't, here's the limitations.
And we're really looking at implementation with the businesses. That's our main focus, right? It's not.
Yeah.
Cause we know what we need to generate. We know.
We know where it needs to go.
So it's really implementation.
If we don't include the business, it won't work.
Well, we need to include.
In the strategic planning meeting in January, the one, one thing that all seven of you were unanimous on was a desire to, in the fee schedule, project out five years proposed. Here's our fee schedule for twenty twenty and here's what we intend our fee schedule to be in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty. And so if, if we're gonna do this and we're gonna play with the effective dates and try to stretch it out, I would propose we actually look beyond just twenty twenty-one and we bring back a fee schedule that you can be comfortable with, which has proposed fee schedules out even further so we can communicate and make better predictability for the business community. And we have our targeted revenue amounts and our targeted, uh, fee schedule, fee structures out into the future.
Just a quick clarification for the record. I don't believe it was unanimous. I believe Alan was most adamantly opposed to any plan that went more than six months.
Plans and communication is against those.
I do wanna, I wanna add to that, just one, one little thing. That's exactly what I was gonna say. The only thing missing from this entire deck that you've handed us is, is yours, three, four, and five and other, I mean, other, it's.
I actually have it right here. So I'm not gonna go over it tonight cause I think it's late and you've had enough information.
We're not adding to work load.
But I do have yours, one, two, and three after this year.
I love it.
I tried everything I could to get ahead of her when I had my conversation and, and nothing worked, so I'm not surprised it's right there.
The other thing I wanted to say was, uh, residents won't be opposed to having more than one adjustments like businesses may be opposed to, especially if they're both reductions. Uh, you, you lowered my rates once and you're gonna do it again?
So, oh.
Can I, I think we've, we've, uh, rode this horse a long time tonight.
I have one more question though.
I know, and I'm.
The horse has no days.
How to get to the corral.
Really pertinent question. I, I'm sure it is.
It is. We have to get to the corral. So when I met with Denise, when I met, sorry. When I met with Denise, there was a question because, um, Chad fielded some of these, I fielded some of these requests where I have a four hundred dollar water bill, I have a five hundred dollar water bill, and it's a utility bill that includes water. And Denise and I had talked briefly when I met with her on these, on this plan. Um, and she had indicated that it probably wouldn't cost the city any additional money, but to separate the bill so you'd have a utility bill and a water bill. Like the residents in Ocre Shadows have. They have a city utility bill and they have a Kearns Improvement District water bill.
And while we're doing that.
Then your question is.
Pull the streetlights out of it too?
It's possible to do. The only thing I was thinking about after, um, Alan and I met about that, I think it, it's a communication tool, I would agree.
Communication?
Yeah. Um, but, all right, that's enough. But, um, I think that, I think that the only thing I might fall up against is the same problem I have in one community that only pays garbage and that is that they don't pay their garbage bill. So I wouldn't have the water shut off if they didn't pay their water bill. I could shut their water off, but if they didn't pay that other utility bill, I don't have as much leverage. Does that make sense? And I'm not sure I wanna go down that road.
Keep the sewer there.
I, I know, we could just stop the sewer.
There's actually, there's actually a good philosophical reason.
It's actually health code.
That's, that's actually, I'll tell you what I'm thinking afterward.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Alan. We have a motion to adjourn.
I have a closed session?
A closed session is not on the agenda.
No, closed session. I moved to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Well, it was not needed.
Right now, okay.
Yeah, it's always on the agenda, just not needed.